Let's test your audio.
Now you'll be caught on camera.
I can see the green in the microphone, you have plenty of full power. See right there. Do it again.
Yeah, I see it, yeah. But I sure would like to test the speakers.
How've you been?
Great, Steve, how about yourself? Good. Hey, a question for you.
Yeah. I am. Agenda action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted, no action will be taken on any item unless it is properly agendaed. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place your cell phones on quiet or do not disturb or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves right to take items in a different order to establish, I'm sorry, to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time placed in manner of comments that may not restrict the comments based on viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners, meaning as other boards, members of the Board of the County Commissioners also serve as the liquor board, Central Lion, Becker Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito of Dayton District Board, Walker Valley, we Control District Board, Willow Creek GID, Silver Springs GID, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this separately posted agenda. Just as a side note, this meeting may take a lunch break between eleven thirty and one thirty. Roll call. We have all commissioners present here and first of the day. Invocation will be given today by Betty Weiser of the United Methodist Church.
Morning. First of all, thank you for inviting me to do the invocation and thank you commissioners for all your hard work. I know sometimes it's a thankless job and it's greatly appreciated that you do this for the good of our community. And also all the staff who support you, we give thanks for that as well. So let us just take a moment and be in an attitude of prayer, allowing the spirit to move through. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, we give thanks for the privilege of gathering together this morning for the good of all the citizens of Lyon County. Please bless those who are here and the work they are tasked with this morning. Let your presence be felt in this meeting and we ask that you grant our commissioners and staff the wisdom to govern with character and conviction and listen with understanding and goodwill to all sides of the issues. May your wisdom guide the discussions and the decisions that are made today. We ask your guidance in the governing with fairness and with the knowledge of the true needs of the people of this community. We pray that the decisions made today will be pleasing to you and will benefit those who live and work in Lyon County. We ask all these things in your holy name, amen.
Thank you, Chapel Weiser. Let's. Please join me.
A pleasure to be here. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And real quick, as an announcement, today we've got a stand-in for Erin, the new and improved Erin, I don't know if she's still heard it. But she's asked anytime we make a motion or speak to identify herself to the record so she can catch the audio recording. Okay, possible action, review and adoption of agenda. I've already got two changes. I'm sorry, participation, no action will be taken on any item unless it's properly agendaed. It's anticipated that public. Excuse me. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during the public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes, the board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk and what does the sign it up there. Is there any public participation for signing? Anything on Zoom, Jeff? No, sir. That's everybody. All righty, for possible action, reviewed adoption of agenda, we are going to pull items six A and item fourteen D. And then I've also been asked to invite fourteen A up to after item seven. Any other changes?
Chairman Gray, could you say what we're pulling?
Fourteen A, I'm sorry, fourteen D. And six A. Mr. Carter, for the record, item six A is being pulled, is there a problem with posting the agenda item and an address? We should publicize, publicize to be in New York. Here, so we'll hear it again. Thank you. And we had a problem with backup material for fourteen D being able to get it uploaded, so we're gonna have to do that for two weeks as well. Any other requests to change?
Chairman Gray, I would make a motion that we approve today's agenda, pulling six A and fourteen B.
D, D.
D is a dog, sorry.
And with that, but also moving fourteen A to item number seven. We have a motion and second and discussion. All in favor? I opposed. And the agenda is approved. So we're going to items seven A, presentation only, presentation, Deputy Taylor, Sheriff, Lyon County Sheriff's Office, life saving award. Oh, so we're gonna move that for two weeks? And so. Move that for two weeks. Okay, so we are gonna go on now to item fourteen A, possible action, approve a resolution of the Lyon County Board of Commissioners recognizing Dream Flights for honoring World War II veterans. Lifting up certain their stories to share with future generations, as was requested by Commissioner Henderson.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dream Flights is a labor organization that, as the resolution will point out, they provide services to our dwindling population of World War II veterans by honoring them with a Boeing Spirit aircraft, which is the types that were used to train officers during World War II. Their business address is actually called us a city, but they're actually based out of the Dayton Air Park. So they are in Lyon County business and what they do is wonderful and they have future plans on that. Mr. Fisher talked about that after we did the presentation. I can read. Okay, resolution number twenty-two, next year one. The resolution of Lyon County Board of County Commissioners recognizing Dream Flights for honoring World War II veterans and collecting and preserving their stories to share with future generations. Whereas over twelve million Americans served in World War II. And whereas over four thousand servicemen and women were killed, six hundred and seventy thousand injured. And whereas this generation of Americans has become known as the greatest generation for their service and sacrifice in preserving freedom. And whereas Dream Flight Flights was established on Darryl and Carol Fisher to honor senior and military veterans. And whereas Dream Flight provides flights in a Boeing Stearman biplane, same aircraft used to train military aviators on the run up to the during the war. And whereas last year Dream Flight honored eight hundred and ninety-one World War II veteran heroes in an effort called Operation September Freedom. And whereas since this exception, Dream Flight has provided flights to a total of five thousand one hundred and thirty-three veterans. And whereas Dream Flight is collecting the story of the veterans which preserve them so that they can be shared with future generations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Lyon County Board of County Commissioners recognizes and commands Dream Flights for providing World War II veterans with flights in a Boeing Stearman biplane. And therefore, be a further resolve that Lyon County Board of County Commissioners recognizes and commands Dream Flights for collecting and preserving stories of World War II veterans to share with their future generations. Mr. Chair, with that, I'd like to move the resolution of the twenty-two zero one.
I'm trying to use the second.
Mr. Fisher, how could I? Thank you.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
I am opposed. It passes by zero one.
You had a gentleman start spring out of his seat and you went straight to the vote?
I'm sorry?
Well, it was fine, I just wanted to, I don't know what it's appropriate to. I'm unfamiliar with the speakers here. Commission, certainly Commissioner Henderson, I really want to thank you on behalf of the hundreds of Dream Flight volunteers for our recognition. We gave eight hundred and ninety-one flights for forty-seven states last year. Most of you probably haven't heard of Dream Flights because we travel all over the US and don't do a lot of work here locally yet. But it really was the last mission for World War II veterans in history, our youngest was ninety-two because he lied. Our oldest was one hundred and four. And we had the privilege of doing that for six airplanes, twenty-one pilots, and it was an amazing experience. Future plans, we'll be talking to you probably in the next three, four, five months, future plans will be to create a place here in Dayton at the airport to honor those eight hundred and ninety-one World War II veterans for the last mission. And to honor veterans locally with Dream Flights here, so stay tuned, we'll be working together soon. But I do appreciate and really appreciate your recognizing our efforts.
You guys, you guys do an awesome job and having been out there and seeing what you got going on and seeing the future plans, I'm excited and I really hope we can garner all the support we need at the local and state level to get it done.
We appreciate that, it's, you know, people will soon find out that what we're doing is very, very unique to the United States and it's gonna happen right here in Dayton, so.
Any questions?
Carol Fisher. Will you read my writing?
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Fisher, what you guys do is absolutely amazing. This is just a small token to appreciate our gratitude. Last time I was out visiting and hanging out there, we got a tail section of one of the planes, a couple of tail sections, I said, I was on the planes they flew to share. And they had the veterans sign their names there. And if you look at it and you look at some of the handwriting, you can see how female the handwriting is of these people who gave their were willing to give their offer for our country and our freedom. And to honor them this way is just strictly breathtaking and so on. Me personally, on behalf of County Commissioners, thank you very much for honoring our veterans.
I do want to mention, you know, you'll see me on the website, all pictures, because I'm flying and doing all the things, but Carol behind me is a very, very, very important person, so I want to thank Carol for helping us get it started.
Carol, can we get you and your crew to come on up, come on back here so we get a picture, present this to them? We'll see.
Yeah, I don't mean to be rude, Commissioner, but we're.
Nope. You have a real job too.
I know, I do, I volunteer, thank you so much.
Bye, guys, thank you. You, Mr. Henderson, that was awesome, thank you, that's. Yeah, once that becomes public, you guys can come out there and visit that, that is just, it's fantastic little thing they got going, it's fancy. All right, where are we? So we are on to official county manager reports. We'll start it by a lot with love.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman Gray, I appreciate that, a few things. Like to congratulate Wendy Mattson as an admin of the year for human services, I don't know if that's statewide or statewide, I believe, isn't it? So, awesome recognition for Wendy and the work she does. Tended to you stepping up for him with various Lyon County and state boards, thank you to Eric Smith and Sheila Holmes for sponsoring, holding that, organizing it. Look forward to our next meeting, kind of with a rubber on me the road. But I thought it was a very productive meeting, so I thank you both. Tended Lyon County Emergency Planning Meeting, have been contacted by some residents from Dayton regarding the flood issues, I know that brought it up at that meeting with a Mr. Page, and maybe he could touch on that just a little bit, we shared since we're here in Dayton today. I appreciate that as far as what's going on with the floodplains on both sides of fifty. And because it's been about a year since I think we've even touched on that, and then I see that, oh, and then attended the Fermi City Council meeting, Sheriff Funnell was there last night, nice job, I attended via Zoom, so I didn't get to shake your hand, but all corners of the county, that's our guy right there. For city of Fermi, much like the Dayton's central corridor especially, just experiencing a lot of growth concerns. Unfortunately, the city lost first round in their lawsuit to block the lining of the canal, that would have devastating effects on the city of Fermi. And who knows what else, and I would just like to throw it out there that we need to support the city in Fermi all we can in the fight against the lining of the canal as we count on that a great deal for our aquifer. And finally, I want to thank Dayton High School, I'm not a tie guy, and so they scored me this fancy polo shirt, I wanted to show it off. So Dayton Dust Doves and I don't have to wear a tie today. Mr. Barnes don't hold it against me, all right, but I actually look pretty good in these Dayton colors, so. Thank you, Dayton High.
Why isn't it the maroon though? Oh, there we go, okay.
I'll maybe ease my way just down to a polo shirt once it warms up. But I do like the road show, good to see everybody. And thank all the citizens of Dayton for showing up today and hopefully take any big concerns out on those four and just use me as a sounding board, all right? That's all I have, Commissioner, or Chairman Gray.
Can I ask you one quick question, Commissioner Jacobson? Do we know why they went city firmly lost the first round of lining of the canal?
Various reasons, but the TCID and the BOR didn't even have to present any. From what I gathered, they didn't have to show any damages to or any, do any sort of, sort of study at all on the effects of that. They say it's basically for lining and they also, in their belief stated that people on wells are basically stealing water. And so that's, there's city water doesn't go throughout the town, it's gonna, it could have devastating effects on a lot of people, including the city water wells. So we get hundreds upon hundreds of acre feet from DRI, I believe Desert Research Institute that studies years ago, and the amount of water that that adds to our aquifer is unbelievable. So it's gonna, it's gonna have some devastating effect, and when we see these landfills and wanting to do more and more growth, although housing that's coming, that's moving our way, just like in the Dayton area, you see the homes going up everywhere, so we shall see, but water is precious, no doubt about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller?
All I can say is it's really great to be in Dayton and we all know whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting, it's always been that way. But speaking of Fermi, I was gonna touch on that later and under agenda request, but I know that we had had a presentation, oh my gosh, it's been a good year or better ago by Mr. Davy Sticks. And it was about this lawsuit that they were going through and our support, and then when, I believe when we reached out to the city of Fermi, what that would look like, they're like, you know, we think we got this handled. Mr. Sticks reached out to me recently and I really think as the county we need to do something to get behind this, it's gonna be devastating to Fermi if they lose this battle. So I'll address that again later in the agenda, but thank you for bringing that up because that's also one of my big concerns up there. And for all of our communities, like you said, the growth is an issue. So that's it for today, for right now, I'll shut up for now.
Commissioner Hockaday?
Well, I got the, it seems like the water day today. My neighbor's well ran out of water and mine's gonna be dug deeper on Monday. So I haven't run out yet, but obviously the drought years are catching up with us. When I attended the Walker River Irrigation District meeting, they did discuss back about halfway there. Hopefully we'll get a lot more rain, we're about forty percent of our reservoir as far as irrigation water. Hopefully we'll get another twenty, thirty, forty, maybe even fifty percent before the end of the rain year in snow. I did hear that the, the snowpack is about seventy percent of normal for the year, so we are a little bit better off this year with snowpack. So far, if we can get more, we'll be great. Also, the Lions Club in Newington had a, have a speech contest called Speak Up, had seven students there, appreciate them inviting me to be a judge. It was fun to watch the school kids again, I'm gonna school teacher way back. Listen to them stand up in front of a crowd and discuss an issue had to do with community service and I thought it was excellent. County Manager Paige's son was in it and did an excellent job, as did the other six students. So I really do appreciate these community service clubs to get out and help our students prepare for their future. I really did enjoy it, it was a little tough being a judge because they all did an excellent job. The scores come down to just a point or two apiece, we kind of figure out that everybody was pushing as hard as they could to make it to the end of the speech. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't really have much this time, I did a zoom into the planning commission meeting last week, I always find those very informative. So attended the Campo meeting last week and as normal, most of the stuff is focused on Carson City, but at least we're there and have a voice and let them know that, hey, we have needs too. And what else, that's really about it, it's been quite a week, actually I liked it that way. Did a little tour this, this past weekend and went to the outcome area. Have to say our compliance percentage with the governor's directives are a lot higher than theirs are, but quite interesting. Carson area, metropolitan, tiny organization.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson, remains a couple of quick issues, one, it is definitely a water meeting. Went to the CWSD meeting last night and talked about a bunch of issues, but one is the EPA Superfund site and what they're kind of doing to us, they're they have no way of cleaning up the mercury in the river, but because we're a super fun site, if there's a massive flood or something, we're ineligible for FEMA dollars to shore up or do anything along the river to prevent even more damage, because EPA, who would give the money, has no money for the super fun site. So it's one of those catch twenty-two's, they want to stop more damage, but they're, by doing so, they're creating more damage and more health risks. So we're working on that, staff is working on that as well. And again, on Highway fifty last night at the, at the, is that four thirty-one turnoff, Virginia City or three forty-one, I can't remember. Yeah, another gnarly looking accident, don't know the specifics yet, but you know, or it doesn't look like things are getting any better out there anytime soon and just wish and would step up and realize it's not a maintenance issue that we need addressed, it's safety issues, so that's all I have, and at this point, we'll go on to County Manager.
Good morning, Chairman Member of the Board, Jeff Page, County Manager, Director. So to Commissioner Jacobson's concern on the bridge issue, he did bring it up to the local emergency planning committee meeting this week, for last week. So there are a number of issues with the bridge, one, the board has never officially taken action as to which location. We have been working based upon the master plan which the board approved, you're looking at the east end of Dayton. We have been in consultation with NDOT, with infrastructure funding coming down, it appears that we may be eligible for a great deal of money to make that. At the same time, which I have confirmation that we will then begin the process with BLM to get right of ways. Because I don't want to be like Washington DC and build a bridge in Alaska that goes nowhere, so I can build, we can build the bridge, I gotta have the road network to support getting people across. So we're working through that process now, we discovered the information about NDOT this weekend from a phone call from one of the top dogs, NDOT called me Sunday, let me know that they're looking into if there's a possibility that they may be able to provide funding for that project as far as getting the bridge built, the other part of it, the road part, which we're still working on, if they were able to provide that service. Of course, we did have further conversations in regards to Opel and Ramsey Weeks, Miller Lane and Iasi Lane, Hendrix, I mean, they opened the door, so. They're gonna look at all those projects to see what, what the criteria, they're just not getting guidance on what that looks like, whether those projects will meet the criteria for those grant dollars or not, but we are actively pursuing going after the grant funding to see if we can see things, we started. I doubt that Miller Lane and Iasi will be something that will be doable from the point that we don't have any pre-engineered on. They, we have two thousand eight, two thousand twelve planning documents that will suffice to get it going. Ramsey Weeks, we have a hodgepodge of NDOT records, which NDOT did themselves, so they're gonna look into that and see, and then there's all if we can find it, so I've already had that information, so I will be sending that to them as well, so that.
You dug that up once.
Yeah. But NDOT, like a lot of state agencies and our county, the, the people we've been working with for the last thirty years were selfish and very self-centered and decided to retire. And now they live this with new people, and so we're trying to get them caught up to speed and we're moving, moving forward from there. I do want to comment on the city of Fermi issue, we are very well aware of what the court decision was. The court did come out and state that anybody using wells may be stealing water from the United States government. From a legal perspective, they may be correct, I don't know what Fermi's next step is as far as the legal side of it goes. There are other alternatives to lining the canal besides concrete. Commissioner, former Commissioner Morton and I sat in a meeting with then Mayor Henry Goodman and a number of engineers, one of those folks was from Denmark, they utilize a some type of fibrous liner where water still is allowed to seep into the ground, but it protects the borders from going out. It is significantly more expensive than concrete, I will give you that, but there are other alternatives out there, so we will continue with the city of Fermi on that issue, I will depending what Commissioner Keller's request will be, and we talk about agenda items, we'll most definitely bring somebody forward to have, have the conversation and like the boards, what Fermi's play is, what those issues are. Water is a significant issue for the entire western Nevada. I realize we have all this great snowpack, but when numbers like seventy percent of snowpack, that does not mean that we have seventy percent of our water, that means that we're at seventy percent from where we are today. If we receive no additional snow or rain between now and summer, we're a little bit better off than we were last year, but not. So that's, that's a big misconception with people, when they hear that, well, two hundred and twenty-two percent less for this time of year. Less for this time of year, so we will we will continue to work through that issue and then uh. Finally, uh we are. Giving a a number of outages of employees due to uh the most recent strain of COVID, so just understand that. We may be getting, they call a department and get an answering machine. Especially those one or two person departments or a library or whatever it may be because of staffing issues. Um so we are still dealing with that and anticipating the next couple three weeks that that should flow through it. We back to whatever the new normal is and then move from there. Do you have any questions or comments if you weren't happy to take them out?
Um can I ask, page, has anybody ever talked about covering the canal? I mean, there's a lot of water, I'm sure lost to evaporation as well, I mean, if you can stop it from one side. I don't know, I mean, and I am sure wouldn't be cheap, but you know, lighting the canal is not cheap either, no matter what they do, um has anybody ever discussed it?
If I recall correctly, I remember this is two thousand. Ten or eleven, when these meetings occurred with the engineering firmers. The city of firmly is pushing hard to do something about getting the canal lined, so we didn't have it happen again. Um there was no, as I recall, there was no discussion about covering it, it was a different type of liners. And the gentleman from Denmark explained it in Europe, they use this fibers. All over the place, yes, it is expensive, um but it's less maintenance, less wear and tear, less environmentally damaging. Um than what concrete was. And at the time, it was like the concrete was two dollars a foot, this fiber liner was four dollars. Not anymore, so what whatever that, I I don't recall, it was it was twice what concrete was. Um but it did allow for down in the the bottom of the canal for sewage to occur, so you could. Recharge the system, but on the edges and the borders of the the canal, there's a much more hardened operation. So that muskrats and those kinds of things could burrow in, and that's that's what we are suspect was the problem, was a muskrat den. With water moving fast, it took a lot of water that canal, but can take about eight hundred to nine hundred CFS. Kind of pulling about that when the canal broke, uh VOR regulated it down to three fifty. So that's all you're getting when it's flowing three hundred fifty CFS at the most going to La Hona. For the folks downstream, remember Churchill County is always um at the tail end of whatever we get. There are no other reservoirs on the Carson system until you get to La Hona, so. They're very concerned about making sure they have significant water to um keep their economy alive from agricultural perspective. So it's not just a safety issue, who's getting the water, and it's also a safety issue, that's why who's getting the water, it it's safety, it's economic development situation for the region, it's providing food. People, I mean, it's the same thing in Mason Valley, Smith Valley, um when we're downwater and they start pumping out of wells. It's a balance between a person's private well and being able to get crops and feed the nation.
I'm sorry.
Question since a significant number of people in Ryan County on wells under government.
Can we turn the phones off, please?
Trying to.
So on private wells, so for for example, on the Walker River or the Carson River. All that water is 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 set by decree or some federal ruling, Truckee's a bit different, um especially the TCID canal. So the the viewpoint is the TCID canal is part of the Newlands project, that the water is going there is. US water. Meaning the citizens of the United States own that water, I don't know that I I totally understand that concept or agree with it. But that's what the court ruled that time. I don't see um that we have that same issue on the Walker or the Carson because of the way decrees are written, the Alpine decree, the Walker River decree. Are significantly different documents than how the truck is. We're the only county in the state that has three different river systems running through it with three certain different sets of rules and regulations and how they manage. The Walker and the Carson are polar opposite in some instances and very similar others, and the truck is just like, who knows?
Thank you. Any other questions you come to tell me about here?
Bob is gonna say with the US water situation and navigate Carson River now, expect that change.
Yeah, they're doing everything they can to federalize the Carson too. Okay, elected official reports, uh. Just turning it right, you have. Chair Honeywell.
Sure, my record is really quick. We have a time sort of thing that's on your agenda, I'm touching that right now, because some ten bars in the coast is gonna take care of that for me. I don't know if I told you guys at the last meeting, if I did, I repeat myself, that's okay. Uh we just onboarded six million people in the last couple of weeks. Lost two, so I got a plus four, so as long as I can keep going in a plus direction, I think we're gonna win that battle. We have five people going to the academy starting Monday. Another five people in July, so about a post of immigration is not allowing me to put five people in, we're typically only allowed two. That's gonna help us close up the gap on the training thing a little bit. We got our fourth dog back from doggy school in in Tennessee and. Deputy Brian Carl has Diego in there working in firmly right now, I talked to him last night when I was up there, thank you very well. We did some SRO changes, Deputy Mike McColl's gonna take over the SRO position in Dayton. And Cody Spencer went on to work for Chair Phelan, so he won the loss. And um other than that, things are just right along. All in good direction. Questions?
Thanks, sir, any other elected officials, I'm not seeing. Okay, moving on to appointed officials. Let's go first.
Morning, the home city director, I said a few things, I left my support for you guys there. Justin had an email about this conservative veteran grant, I know you've said for the rolling a property and. For river corridors, and I'm not sure all the information, if there's a virtual listening session in February in the tenth. And um I'm hoping somehow there might be money available for the data events center, so we can get something going there. Cause right now we're just like a constant doing out there. And um the other problem is the Central Park Board is not meeting because of forum. Problems, and so we're looking for Dayton people or anybody in the central corridor to apply for that board, so. They can meet, cause it kind of holds our projects up when we wanna, the projects don't, if they don't need to. You know, help send us in a direction they wants to go, so anybody can help on board with the issue, that's it.
Thank you, sir, any questions, just tell us.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director for the record, I gave you all the a copy of the. Community development report, I put a copy on the table, um I did happen to catch a air in the table. That's talking about the different fees and taxes that we collected, I will make sure that that's corrected in the next report. Tried to get it done through this one, but um didn't actually get the correct numbers until this morning as. Working with Mr. Foley's office on that. Wasn't something that I caught until like twelve fifty yesterday, so um so anyway, I will make sure that that's that's correct, I just wanted to give you heads up on that. Any questions?
Good morning, sheila Holmes, Director, Lion County Community Services, for the record. Um I did submit a report for you guys, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything on that. I do just wanna highlight somehow we missed on this final draft in December at our children's services, we partnered with Lions Club out of Newington. They did a coat drive and we were able to provide twenty seven coats to kiddos mainly in Newington, but some did trickle out into Silver Springs. Um twenty seven coats, we were missed getting that in there, but we do wanna recognize the Lions Club and our partnership with them and being able to do that. Um I do wanna highlight what I had put under my section of that report in regards to the work we're doing with NACO in regards to the children's. Protective Services Assessment and our hopes to get that stabilized and reduced over. At least the three years that I've been in this position almost, um. You continue to see significant increases every year on that assessment due to instability in the division of the Children and Family Services, so. Um working to get that at least stable, but hopefully reduced, because that would be um the best possible outcome. The other thing I just wanna notify you guys on was, I am the appointee for a rural county of a hundred thousand or less to the Substance Use Working Group. Under the Attorney General's Office, we met for the second time yesterday. And we received a preliminary report, they were asking for our recommendations on the needs assessment that the state is doing for the opioid response. So that final report hasn't been completed yet, when it is, I would definitely be getting it in your guys' hands. But Lion County was on several of their top five areas, one, um you're the second most vulnerable county for opioid use. And they had different um factors within that, and for twenty twenty, we were the second highest county for opioid related deaths. Confirmed, so there's definitely some concerns that we have at the county in regards to our opioid related use and misuse. And we'll definitely be um looking forward to how those funds come out in that one Nevada litigation. And with us being on so many of their top five charts, I am hoping that we'll be seeing a good percentage of funds out of that to help us with our preventative. Our treatment and our recovery when it comes to substance use. Uh benefit that came out of that needs assessment was also the heavy push. For the state to recognize poly substance use, so hopefully these funds will not be targeting these opioids, but they're recognizing that. Rarely do those things happen in silos, so we would be able to utilize those ones, hopefully, fingers crossed, to tackle a variety of substance use issues. That's pretty much all I've got for now.
Any questions? I I have one quick one, um I was approached by a commissioner from another county, apparently the Governor's Commission on Aging. Is looking for a rep from Lion County, wasn't given any specifics or anything, but I just think maybe that might be something you want to look into to. See if that's somebody we can, you know, get on there.
I can reapply, um what I was told in my previous attempt was that they were looking for a commissioner. Um that the role that they need to fill is a a commissioner from a rural county, but I can definitely look back into that. Um if I, any of you are interested, my feedback was that they were looking for a commissioner.
We can fill that role with somebody.
That would be fabulous, we do have a large aging population and having a voice on that condition would be great.
Thank you, Sean. Any other appointed officials, I'm not seeing. Alrighty, um. Go on to advisory board reports, any advisory board reports?
Gina Lee, for the record, um I'm from the Dade Regional Advisory Board and. I don't have a lot to report other than we did have quite a lively discussion. Um at this month's meeting and uh it was in regards to flooding, to water, funding and. What's going on there and we have forwarded that information, we have included in our minutes and have forwarded it in our. Recordings as well, so um other than that, I just want to thank you for your support, having good attendance and uh. The water is uh is in place, thank you.
Oh, Melinda Cash, I'm with the Chairman Mount House Advisory Board. And um first of all, we, I just wanted to tell you, we're going to have two agenda items that I believe are fairly important coming up. Number one is final discussion and vote on the proposed GID for the pool, which we hope will be in Mount House. And so that'll be coming up on the next agenda. The other item of interest, especially to Mount House, is discussion, further discussion regarding a community center. Um you know, I've been asked by Mr. Page, what all, to please ask in a community, what would we use a community center for? I would like to point out, because we don't have anything, nothing, you know, to be that. That even having something as simple as a coat drive for our children in our area, which would obviously be very needed. Uh we're unable to do, because we have no place to meet to do things like that. Uh I can think of a thousand things we could use a community center for. And as pointed out by Mr. Cooney, and I know he's listening. Uh I believe it was his family that donated two acre, two acres back in nineteen ninety one. With the intent to build a community center on that. Um I also, the only, Mr. Page, you know, I tried to provide to him what I could find. Uh I believe we were funded on several occasions. Uh to build a community center back in the nineties. And each time we received, you know, the possible hopes that this was gonna go forward, that money was always drawn back away from us. Uh you know, it's my hopes that maybe we can find funding. Either through some of this federal money coming through or grants. Uh we don't need a six million dollar center, we don't need a three million dollar center, we don't even probably need a hundred thousand. Dollar center, I mean, we just need something. And uh we're not real picky, we'll take anything we can get, and since we have the land and we had it for years, I'm hoping we can move forward on something. And we will be gathering community information and presenting a report on that, so thank you very much. Oh, and also, I don't hardly know anybody that doesn't have this virus, so I'm choosing to wear my mask to protect myself. I don't think I'm sick, but I I just, everybody in my family is either coming down with it or I know somebody that has it, so. Thank you.
Any other advisory board reports? Okay, uh moving on to item eleven, uh I'm sorry, uh consent agenda, item twelve. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners. With one action and without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed. And acted upon separately separately during this meeting. And said agenda items today are items twelve through thirteen B. Chairman Graham moved that we approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? And if all the discussions. All in favor? Opposed? And on the record showed that it's intended in the past by middle. And we are going to move on to the county manager, our time is certain, yeah, for a half hour, so, item fourteen B. Where are we in the record, oh, sorry. For possible action, authorize the Director of County Manager to create a public YouTube channel, YouTube channel. Uh to store audio visual recordings of county commission meetings, planning commission meetings and county approved public service information announcement. That was a request by myself. Uh the reason I requested that is, let's say, uh it's a tool people use today to get information, they can catch up on meetings after the fact. Not asking for it to be a live, you know, live broadcast, because we do live broadcasts on Zoom. But it is a good place for community to go and catch up on stuff, and it's just one more way we can communicate with the public. Um Mr. Chair, Member of the Commission, Jeff Page, County Manager, so I have asked staff to uh look into it, unfortunately, Aaron's not here today. You know, we we discovered, it's not, it's not a hard process for work through that, Mr. Foley. And I had this and the discussion, so we're in the process right now of reviewing and. Probably going to change our agenda in minutes software. So um he wants to verify that whatever we do will be compatible with that, so that what what it makes it simple, so at the end of the. Business meeting, best case scenario, at the end of the commission meeting, Aaron or Shannon or whoever's taking the minutes. And we'll timestamp on that recording, so you can click on the agenda and go to the item you want to hear. Um or right now, I can't, but I could do it, but it's gonna take Aaron a couple hours going through the meeting to do that. So there's processes and new softwares that allow for that to happen, um so um we will continue, we'll bring back a report next uh. If this gets approved, they export me as to where we are, but Mr. Foley uh may request that we hold out until we have that new software in place. Um so but we'll see how it goes, just making sure that mildly concerned, I'm not familiar enough with YouTube Live. But I do know is that Zoom works well, we have a great attendance from the public with Zoom, the public's used to Zoom, so I don't want to change that. Of course, you don't have to, um my experience with. No, I don't mean to be disrespectful of other counties, but I think we they do a disservice to their public. When all they can do is watch a YouTube video, live stream video of their meeting and not have any public participation. Um and so we wanna make sure that we still allow that to occur and happen, unlike city of firmly. Or some of the smaller county grid of centralized uh population base. The way we do things now allows everybody in the county to participate and wants to. So if the board passes the agenda item, we will come back in two weeks and report as to what our recommendations are moving. I don't anticipate a significant financial. Any other questions, Porson? So yeah, my intent bringing this up wasn't, I mean, it wasn't never to supply it to Zoom. Zoom is what we need, that's, you know, the live, you know, the live interaction that we need. My intent for this, and I, and I think we may be, you know, adding too much to it, you know, making sure it's compatible with the software. The intent, as far as I'm concerned, is just to upload the raw video and people can fast forward. I'm not sure much you're, you know, familiar with YouTube, but you can, you know, just like a video playback, you can zoom in and out of that Zoom, but you can scroll in and out of the password. I don't think we need to make sure it's integrated. I don't think that's what people are really looking for. There's a real need for that. I just, I think we just need to upload the raw video and let people figure out what it is they want to see.
Correct. And I all want to make sure that whatever software we choose for the future for the agenda, that YouTube is going to be able to be utilized to.
So I have not understand why it would need to be, because like I said, it's just.
So it's a one click for the public from the website. They click the minutes, the agenda or the video. They don't have, not if they were looking for.
It would, it would be just a link on the, it would just be a link.
I understand what you're saying. We're trying to make it so that for Aaron, it's a one stop shop. It's not another two hours worth of work to get something done.
Yeah, and I guess maybe I mean, maybe that's, if we created a channel, people could just go to the Lyon County channel and they, I mean, all the videos would be there, listen, I mean, it's a whole library and they could select which video they wanted to see.
And so I understand that. Same, we're in the process. At the same time, this was brought up, we're, we've been in the process now for two months, looking at agenda software. Whatever we do with agenda software, we want to make sure that what we're going to do for future use for, for the public, that we can make it simple for the public to get to what they want to see and what they want to look at. I'm not saying we're not going to do the YouTube thing. That's how we're going to start out. We just want to make sure that whatever process we start, we don't have to do it over again because they didn't do it right the first time. That's, that's my only point. Okay. Yeah. The end goal is to have it so that the public at large can click on the video, find what they want to find, watch what they want to watch and move on. That's the best case scenario. That is our hope, is make it simple for the public. Because if you're my 85 year old mother.
I don't know, some of them are pretty.
It's a whole lot different for her than it is for, for my 17 year old kid.
Is she helping?
She, she still hangs up, she still turns off her phone after she can get voicemail, but she's very bad.
All right.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, we record these meetings. So if anybody requests a recording, we could supply that now, right?
Correct, correct. We recorded both on Zoom as well as through audio.
Right, so moving forward, instead of just jumping into just a YouTube page, I think having it where all of our systems work properly together is a good idea. We're not keeping the public from being able to request those recordings.
And we, and we do get requests from a variety of people on a regular basis for a copy of the. And this is why we looked at the time, because what most people get is, I want, I want the discussion about manufactured housing, perimeter foundations, I don't want the whole. I received a number of telephone calls from members of the public asking specifically for, for that piece.
Well, my beginning is, if we take an extra couple of weeks or so, letting you do your investigation, talking to Josh Foley is not going to stop the public from requesting those recordings now.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So what I need, Mr. Chair, is a motion to approach where we can move forward.
Oh, he showed up. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller for the record. Good morning, everyone. I appreciate being able to zoom in today. My family has been ill and so until they got their COVID test finalized today and it was negative, I, I didn't want to come and potentially infect everyone with whatever it is that they were sharing. On this particular item, we've been actively reviewing and shopping new agenda software. Many of those softwares have the capability built in to generate the YouTube information that you're talking about. So I would hate to create a channel and then do a new channel that was through the software and integrate those two together. So we're trying to time this, so we have it integrated, priced out, shopped out, and we can make a recommendation to the board through the budget process, which is normally what we try and do when we do software purchases. So just so you know, it's not that we're dragging our feet, it's that we're trying to do the process properly and get the best software for the, for the county at this time. Thank you.
Yeah, no, and I wasn't insinuating you guys weren't going to get properly. I was just trying to go for the keep it simple, you know, keep it simple method, or the video is just uploaded to the channel and people can, you know, get on there at two o'clock in the morning if they want. I was trying to actually just make it easier on you guys and the public. But if you've got, if there's an off the shelf program out there that allow them to go to exactly where they want to go, you know, via a link on, on the county page, that's great. I just, you know, I just, me, I see more expense and more work for staff, but that's, that's on you guys if you want to do that. So is there going to be a motion to continue this item or to direct staff to keep working on it or?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to authorize and direct the county manager. And I don't care if it's the YouTube page or whatever it is. What I'm going to do is move it to the county manager to bring back his recommendations for a YouTube like page. In other words, it's something a little different than that they have everywhere.
I would be happy to second that, but I got a question if that is in compliance with the agenda. The agenda item says to authorize and direct the county manager to create a public YouTube page.
Well, what I'm asking for is something less than that, I'm asking to bring back recommendations.
It's just asking for recommendations that would be less than. See you.
We're staring at you, Steve.
The county manager said he planned to bring it back in a couple of weeks.
He also asked for a motion.
Correct, I just need an authorization to move forward on it. Yeah. Move forward with, and come back with recommendations, that's what I mean.
So yeah, and that's what the motion basically is, that you go out and bring it back.
But it, it sounds like they're, they're on it. They're trying to discuss how well it's going to work, but the new system that they're looking at. So by just using the agenda item here and authorizing and directing the county manager to create a public YouTube page channel, it's going to do the same thing we're trying to get to. He's going to come back and talk to us about how well he's going to integrate together so that you don't have to spend extra money creating new stuff. I would think that the motion extends.
So do I hear that as a second there, Commissioner Hockaday?
I will second the item.
Any, any discussion? Any public comment? Ms. Lee.
Gina Lee, for the record, I have some familiarity with posting videos on YouTube. And, and one of the questions I have is whether you're planning on putting historical, there was the meetings that have already existed that we have in Zoom. Are you planning on putting those up on YouTube page as well? Would that be your intent to do that?
This is discussion at this point, that's not even something that's been discussed among staff yet.
Okay.
I guess that would be, you'd probably come down, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but that would probably come, come down to a storage availability issue and everything else.
Okay, I, the reason that I bring that up is that it doesn't seem like there would be any conflict if you were doing historical information, to put the historical information up on YouTube in, in an organized manner, as well as involve the software for future things, that is that those two things can actually work independently. And but the software that he's referring to, where you can page ahead is very useful. And I have experienced that too, so that's all.
Thank you, Ashley. Any other further, any further public comment? It will take a vote this time, all in favor of the motion? Do you need to restate it? I'm sorry.
So are we amending it to just come back with recommendations or are you hearing the motion?
I changed, my motion was not for him to have to create it and bring back the created item. It was just to get back the information.
So I'll take a vote at this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item 14C, possible action, authorize and direct the county manager to provide Wi-Fi capabilities at the former Smith Valley Justice Court Building and Silver City Community Center, requested by Commissioners Hockaday and Anderson. Commissioner Hockaday, did you want to open with that?
Well, I did, to really use Wi-Fi at the Justice Court Building in Smith. We could conduct meetings there. To, to, thanks to, to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Silver City Community Center needs Wi-Fi. They don't have any Wi-Fi in the community. And every, every advisory board meeting I go up to, that's a topic that comes up, they need Wi-Fi there. So I'll let's put it so I can, so we see what we can do to actually provide Wi-Fi with them. I'd like to thank Mr. Foley for providing some information to me about this and hopefully he's got some more for us to know. Hey, Steph wants to check that one.
I'll start off and then we can go with Mr. Foley. So the Silver City Community Center is less problematic for me than the Smith Valley site, because we own it. We don't own the building that, or the ground that the Smith Valley, or Smith Valley Justice Court. In fact, we don't own anything at Smith Valley other than a little water system. So Mr. Foley can address the IT issues that we may have and the associated costs of getting us there. I don't know that we have any problems with Wi-Fi or the Internet expect agreement, that we have any issue with it. But we, just for Commissioners' information, we don't own that building, even though it's, we use it for 40 plus years as a justice, more to be by fire.
Any questions for Mr. Page? Hey, Ms. Foley, you're up.
Thank you, Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller for the record. We've done a bit of research into this, we being not the Royal, we, I have Hazen who's been working on it for us. And for Silver City Community Center, the most expensive way for us to get that is AT&amp;T, which would get us a, a pretty dedicated line into that, but it's cost prohibitive. We have checked with microwave vendors to bring wireless to the, to that location in Silver City. And for an eight megabit per second download, it's approximately $59 per month. Or you could do a 16 megabit download for $79 a month. Or we could start out with a lower, and if we end up having bandwidth issues, we can take a look at increasing that. So my recommendation in that particular case is if the board wishes to pursue that, that we would authorize contingency funding for, it's $708 a year to do that. And I believe there's a connection fee as well when we do that. For the Smith Valley site, we have a couple of options. One of them would be to bring it into our county network with our own licensed frequencies. So we're never stepped on. I don't know if you've ever had the experience where you're online and then you lose connectivity, especially on Zoom. It's kind of fun, people freeze and, and all that fun stuff. Our, our network would prohibit that or address that type of situation, but it's very expensive. We could bring the library into it and it's a little over $6,000 to do that. The other option is I believe the same microwave vendor could bring in internet to that, which again, we could do $59 per month there plus the installation fee. My only concern with that, and you've got the bean counter talking here, is for once or maybe even twice a month, we're to possibly provide Zoom, which may or may not work well for the citizens in Smith Valley anyways, because of the limited availability of internet. Is it really worth the cost of providing it to that facility? If the board decides it is, my recommendation would be, we can take a look at that $59 a month and see how it works out. Or we can bring it into the county network, which accomplishes some other things for the library system. But we also have an issue getting from that justice court to the library or back, back and forth, because there are trees in the way. So it's not an easy solution. It takes time and probably wouldn't be implemented until maybe in spring or, or early summer. So those are the options. My recommendation for Silver City would be the wireless vendor at eight megabits per second. And then Smith Valley, my recommendation is, you know, we can possibly, if all we're doing is for a meeting or two, we can possibly looking at taking a hotspot from someone's phone and using it for that in that location, instead of doing a dedicated cost, just cost benefit analysis, but that's up to the board, not me.
So Mr. Bean Counter, Commissioner Gray, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So with the rural broadband initiative and some of the ARPA funds and stuff, would there be, if we were to go for the better option and actually draw, you know, draw the county, go on the county system, would, would we be able to get reimbursed for that, you think, at any point? Or can we get funds to pay for it upfront?
So short answer is, we can use ARPA funds, $10 million of ARPA funds for any government service. So we could use the money from ARPA for that. My, my one caveat to that is, I have talked with the county manager, I've talked with some individual commissioners at times and some different people in, in the community. I think you're probably going to have of our $11 million allocation, which you've already allocated almost half of it or close to half of it. I think you're going to have probably about $60 or $70 million in requests. So trying to figure out what you spend it on, we can do some nickel and, and dime in the grand scheme of things like this and do that. Again, we're taking a licensed frequency into, into a facility that's not ours. It could possibly be taken back by the fire district at some point.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Any other questions for Mr. Foley or anybody else that need further discussion?
Chair, I, I'm looking at this and saying, okay, we're going to spend possibly $700 at the low end of the year to take care of the entire year. We do have the possibility then of having a meeting in Smith Valley for the county commissioners. Not sure the room is going to allow that, but at the bottom line here, we're looking at $700 a year to get Wi-Fi to the south end of the county. If we went on the actual net for the county and use ARPA funds, $6,000, I know that's, you know, $6,000, but we're spending $3 million, $4 million, $5 million up on the north end. I'm kind of sitting here looking at what you're going to take to get some communication down in South County, my district. I'm, I'm willing to look at either of those options, but I really do want to get some communication down there. So if nothing more, advisory board meeting and other meetings, getting help to the public that can't make use because of the size of the hills. That's where I'm coming from, I know $6,000 out of $5 million, that's a chunk, really. But still, I, I do think we need to have some priority of getting Wi-Fi to matter.
Mr. Chair. Sir, I would recommend, recommend a motion to authorize and direct county managers to provide Wi-Fi to get to all these two locations. They come back in two weeks with a recommendation from staff on plan on implementation, associated costs, all those things to the board and address that. Come back for a question on the Smith Valley side, on Silver City, I think, pretty much. And that actually brings me to a question for the DA. Can we split this into two motions?
Yes.
Okay, that's, and that was, that was Commissioner Anderson that just had that question, if off the record like that. So you want to go ahead and make a recommendation?
We could, we could split that.
We can split it. Okay, I, I would like to move to direct the county manager to provide Wi-Fi capabilities at the Silver City Community Center. We have a motion and a second and a discussion? A public comment?
Um.
Silver City Community Center.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
If I could, could we get the motion amended to fund that out of contingency, because we don't have any, it's not budgeted for this year.
We want to do that out of contingency, out of ARPA, I thought we were discussing ARPA.
Silver City is ongoing costs and I recommend with your contingency. If you're doing a microwave dish on the county network, then I'd recommend you look at ARPA.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion to include that the Wi-Fi service to the Silver City Community Center be funded out of contingency.
And does your second still stand, Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Any further comment from the board or the public? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have a question for Mr. Foley. Mr. Foley, on the Smith Valley one, what, if we do the Lyon County tie-in for the six thousand dollars, is there any ongoing monthly fees after that?
No, there would not be ongoing fees after that. The only, the only additional fees would be eventually when the radios die, replacing the radios with new ones.
Okay, well, I know you're very conservative and I love you for that, but I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to tie Smith Valley to the Lyon County service for the six thousand dollars to come out of the ARPA funds.
I'll second that one.
And if, if we could modify that, it's approximately sixty-four hundred dollars.
Oh, now you're going to get technical?
Yeah, I am.
I'd rather do an upper limit of eighty-five hundred, that'd be my recommendation.
That'd work.
That'll work, okay, all I'm going to do is.
Okay, my second still stands, any discussion on board? Any public comment? I'll take the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, question here is. Yeah, let's go ahead and take a break and then we'll come back and go to our time certain. It goes back in their order and we will now go to our time certain. Sixty, presentation on bail jail reform by the sheriff's office.
For the record, I'm not going to speak very much about this, I'm going to turn to the experts of Lieutenant Lawrence and Nicole Scharo. But this is just going to be a brief overview on, there's been a lot of legislative mandates that came through this last state session. It's going to change the way that we do business and the way you should write this business. This one, Senate Bill four twenty-four, is going to probably have the biggest financial impact on this county of all of them. Working with the county administration, the court systems to come up with a portion of a solution to this whole, whole thing. But we thought we'd come here today and kind of just give you guys our perspective on where this is going to go. And I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Lawrence.
Josh Lawrence, Lieutenant Lyon County Sheriff's Office, good morning, it's good to see you guys again. Evident as last time I spoke, I'm not a very good public speaker, so if I start chewing on my words, please laugh with me. Because that's going to happen. So, I'm on the last one, so I can see that. I've been employed with Lyon County Sheriff's Office since July of ninety-nine. Term position middle level management, Lyon County Community Center, I've been there for three years. And in three years that I've been there, the conditions has improved tenfold. Everything from medical for the inmates, better maintenance from Doug, Josh Foley getting us equipment, support from the sheriff, the living conditions from the inmates, the working conditions, better equipment. It is tenfold, there's always room for improvement, so we work on that every day. Previous employment, I worked for Nevada Department of Corrections, so I've been around. Today, I'm going to talk to you guys about Assembly Bill four twenty-four, Nevada Supreme Court advance opinion, Jose Valdez Jimenez, which in my opinion, this Assembly Bill four twenty-four came from Jose, Jose Valdez Jimenez, and the effects on current and future detention facility operations. Now, when I say the effects on current and future detention facilities, I look at this as two prompts. We're going to have two issues here. One, one issue is how is it going to affect the courts, the district attorney's office, and the public defender's office and everybody else they have to deal with when you bail hearings. The other one is staffing in the jail, right? Right now, we're struggling as it is, okay? If we go to what we suspect is going to happen July first, the jail's going to fail. If the jail fails, everybody fails, that means the DA fails, courts fail, public defender's office fails, and anything that goes along with it, okay? As for this talk, I chopped up the Assembly Bill and the court opinion to what matters. If you want to read it in its entirety, I brought copies, I put them over there on the table, okay? Assembly Bill four twenty-four, and I'm sure Steve Routh corrected me if I'm wrong. Well, I hope. A court of competent jurisdiction may adopt an administrative order relating to the circumstances under which a person may be released from custody without a pre-trial release hearing, including without limitation those circumstances under which a sheriff or chief of police may be released without bail a person charged with misdemeanor. The problem I have with that is that the Lyon County Detention Facility services two district courts, three district courts, two municipal courts, and one specialty court, okay? When you look at the first portion of that, it says, a court of competent jurisdiction may adopt rules and allowing the sheriff's office to do this, to do that, okay? Well, if you look at two district courts, three justice courts, two municipal courts, and one specialty court, that's eight different sets of rules. I don't know about you guys, but have you ever had eight bosses telling you what you didn't? I'm thinking that's going to be a little hectic, I wouldn't want to do that. I don't want nothing to do with that whatsoever, at all. Can we go to the next slide? Assembly Bill four twenty-four continuing, except as otherwise provided in this section. Interes one seventy-eight forty-four in section five point five of this act, a court shall within forty-eight hours after a person has been taken into custody, forty-eight hours after a person has been taken into custody, hold a pre-trial release hearing in open court or by means of remote communication to determine the custody status of the person. The pre-trial release hearing may continue, be continued for good cause shown. As used in this section, remote communication means communication through telephone or video conference. Basically, what that says, soon as somebody is arrested and brought to Lyon County Jail, it starts, the clock starts ticking at that arrest. You have to have that person in front of a judge, district attorney, the public defender's office, and so on and so forth within forty-eight hours unless there's good cause. So, if you get arrested, if you're, if one, two o'clock in the morning, all right? This happens all the time, one, two, three o'clock in the morning, somebody come in, they'll be highly intoxicated, either on drugs, alcohol, or whatever, and they'll take them twelve, fifteen, twenty hours to sober up, okay? How are you going to schedule forty-eight hearing, hour hearings on the weekends? You can't do it. The only way that you can actually ensure somebody's, that we're going to follow this state bill, is in my opinion, is to have the ability to do a court or bail hearing every day, every twenty-four hours, okay? There is no way to guarantee bail hearings within forty hours, forty-eight hours. Staff is needed to ensure bail hearings can be conducted as needed seven days a week. Staff needed to process and press time more on that layer, okay? We are struggling as it is, right now, we do bail hearings three days a week. Okay, we are struggling as it is. Right now, we do bail hearings three days a week, which I'll explain here. And we're barely keeping up. Nevada Supreme Court advanced opinion. It's never a good idea to ignore any court's opinion, especially supporting court's opinion. And this is very interesting. This was a lawsuit from night county, okay? Night county got sued over this. And what the court said is the right to reasonable bail is guaranteed by the Nevada constitution for individuals who commit offenses other than capital offenses or first degree murder. Bail serves the important function of allowing a defendant to be released pending trial. While at the same time ensuring that he or she will appear at future proceedings and will not pose a danger to the community. When bail is set and an amount of the defendant cannot afford. However, it deprives the defendant of his or her liberty and all its attendant benefits, despite the fact that he or she. Has not been convicted and is presumed innocent to safeguard against pretrial detainees sitting in jail simply because they cannot afford to post bail. We conclude that the following due process protections are constitutionally required. Okay, what they're saying is that's the law. We can't step out of that. A defendant who remains in custody following arrests is constitutionally entitled to a prompt individualized determination on his or her pretrial custody status. The individualized determination must be preceded by an adversarial adversarial hearing at which the defendant is entitled to present evidence and argument. Concerning the relevant bail factors, the judge must consider the factors set forth in interest one seventy-eight point four eight. Five-three and may impose bail only if the state proves. By clear and convincing evidence that it is necessary to ensure the defendants present at future court proceedings or to protect. The safety and the community, including the victim. So you have what the courts, the district attorney's office and what they need to do. Okay, set forth right there. If there isn't staff in the jail to conduct these these hearings, to get them there, to facilitate it. We're gonna lose. We are going to lose. Effects on the line county sheriff's office detention center. In two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, pre-COVID. Pre-bail reform. It was the good old days, alright? Yeah, you get arrested. There was a what's called forty-eight hour PC here. Basically, cop arrests you, you write out your probable cause on a form and it gets submitted to a judge. Okay, judge looks at it, says eh, looks like a good arrest signs on it, dude stays in, person stays in jail, here's the bail amount, okay? Now, seventy-two hours later, you're supposed to have a an arraignment excluding weekends and holidays, okay? That means if you get arrested at one AM on Thanksgiving morning. Okay, Thursday is a holiday, Friday is a holiday, Saturday's Saturday, Sunday's Sunday. Then you have seventy-two hours after that. So if you if you cannot afford bail. And you got arrested for a minor minor crime, you probably wouldn't see the the judge until the following Wednesday. That's a week in jail. That's why bail hearings, the Supreme Court and state. Bill four point four has been reacting, okay? In the old days, us in the jails like. Hey, we'll book him when we get to him, you know? Ah, the judges see him when we see him. It was no big deal, big deal, just lazy day, we'll get to it when we get to it, okay? So back then, year in two thousand eighteen, uh the yearly bookings, bookings being how many bodies, how many people were actually brought to the jail? In two thousand eighteen, it was two thousand one hundred and one. And two thousand nineteen, it was one hu- one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two, okay? That's a small city, if you ask me, small township. Average day stays. Now, this is very important. This is where we gotta get in a neat and nitty and gritty here. Average day stay in that in those days was thirteen days, ten hours. Remember how I said we'll get to it when we get to it, because usually they stayed in there for thirteen days, ten hours. Now, look at it as building a house. In thirteen days, ten hours. Back then, we had thirteen days, ten hours to build a house. And the average daily population was one hundred. Okay, next slide, please. Uh twenty twenty COVID restrictions and started bail hearings. We do bail hearings three days a week currently. It's Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Yearly bookings in twenty twenty was one thousand six hundred and nineteen. It's like, it's slightly dropped because of. Well, uh COVID restrictions, okay? But it was, yeah, I mean, it's still small city. Average day stays, it dropped down because we're doing uh bail hearings to nine days, ten hours. That we were building the same house, okay, because you're one thousand six hundred and nineteen people. Yes, sir.
I got a question on that. On the nine days, ten hours, are those nine calendar days or nine business days?
Any day.
So nine calendar days.
Nine calendar day, yeah, nine days, ten hours. So, you know, twenty twenty, we're still building the same house in nine days, ten hours instead of thirteen hours and ten or thirteen days, ten hours. Average population dropped down to fifty-nine point seven, okay? That's kind of important because uh usually in the past, uh we always use the average daily population. To determine how busy we are, okay? We can't do that anymore. We gotta look at yearly bookings, because that's where the the real work is coming from. And I'll explain why. Twenty twenty-one. We have partial COVID restrictions in the jail. We have a full year bill here in three days a week. Yearly bookings. Uh went up to one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six. Okay, we're back up to the pre-COVID, pre-bail hearing booking level. Today, the average day stays in the jails five days, nine hours. We're building the same house in five days, nine hours. It's compression of time. Okay, we in the old days, we took our time, ah, we'll book him when we get to him, okay? Now we're five days, nine hours. We cannot keep up. Uh my backup over here, control room operator Nicole. Uh Sisneros uh is gonna explain what it's what I mean by compression of time and what it takes, okay? Our average daily population is still at still at fifty-nine. But we had, it's basically, we have to figure out how we're gonna do our mandatory tasks, which is feeding medications. Escorting all of those bookings. Get them into court and get them out and release them in five days, nine hours.
Any kind of priority on those guys, like, I mean, you guys treated DUIs the same as, uh, you know, burglary?
No, DUIs, uh we have to hold them for a mandatory amount of time. So same with domestic battery. If you get arrested for domestic battery, you gotta stay in jail for twelve hours. If you're arrested for DUI, you gotta be pulled under point zero four, under point zero four.
I guess what I'm getting at, are they looking at staying the average five point nine days as well or five days, nine hours as well?
Okay, so the the average day stays, that includes the fifty-nine people who stay in there free. For up to years waiting on the the trial process. So that and the fifty-nine number is a little um deceiving. Because um some of those bookings are people in custody. Were last year's staff because they're still in there, because they're still waiting on the on the process. So, um, you know, if you do the math, it one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six and we're fifty fifty-nine, okay? If you do nineteen sixty-six, take away fifty-nine, I'm terrible at math. Sorry, I'm sorry, coach, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering if there's any priority based on the way you guys do these like as DUI. You know, is he gonna be out basically the next day when he's sober or is he gonna stick around for a few days just because?
Well, I don't wanna talk to the courts or the DA, but if they don't pose a risk to the the public, they're more than likely gonna get an OR. Okay, so if they're sober, they don't have a car, it's been impounded or whatever, but they don't pose any risk, so most of the time they're gonna get an OR.
That's true, thank you.
Mister Chair, for the record, OR release on. Yes. And my predictions is bookings are gonna continue to rise, okay? Uh crime is never ending. Um I. I have my own opinions. I don't have the documentation. I wanna talk for the sheriff, for the district attorney's office. But we have, we have some serious crimes going on in line county, okay? And uh I don't see it ever going away. Sheriff Honeywell's diligent efforts to fill vacant positions, put more enforcement on the street, catch more criminals. So he gave a little spill earlier. Um he's got five going to post, he just hired six more. You know, I don't know how many, how many deputies, well, new deputies, they go up and they wanna arrest everybody. So I don't know how to come up with a number, uh the average arrests that deputies make, but um I I work patrol, I I can I can make an arrest every day if I wanted to. Okay, so with more cops on the street, which means more bookings, which means more bail hearings, which means more paperwork to uh. To complete, which also condense our time. Um you could only do so much work with the resources that you have, and we don't have enough resources in the jail. Excluding what the court process process it's going to take on its own, we don't have enough people to do the process. Um conducting bail hearings forty-eight hour, within forty-eight hours of arrest will lower average days and still. Uh days in jail to two to three days. Now, if we go every twenty-four hours, I can see that going to one day, twenty hours. Okay, because it's that quick. It's basically a revolving door, alright? And you can only push so much product out of an employee to get so much done. And that's huge when you start thinking about what's going on in a jail. We are there to provide basic life necessities for the people in jail. And then the ones, the people that have been ordered by a court. We no longer have legal reason to hold them. Yeah, they're a little, we have a little bit of leniency, you know, what's a reasonable time? To get somebody out of jail, to finish up booking, to finish up uh the release process or what have we ever got to do, okay? But you guys as citizens, if you got arrested, okay, you went in for a bail hearing. The judge said, okay, you're not a risk, we're gonna, we're gonna release you. Alright, how long do you think as reasonable human beings? In which you should be out of jail. Is it two hours? Four hours, six hours, ten hours? Twenty-four hours? Good, if we go to bail hearings every day, we have mandatory tasks that we have to do. Cause we are in charge of everybody's health and welfare in the jail. We have to feed them, medicate them, watch them break up fights, and we can't stop what we're doing. To do additional arrests or releases every day that the Bell Reform Act is going to cause. And Nicole probably talked, will talk to you about what it takes. Uh will increase releases on a daily basis, not just primarily on Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And Nicole will talk to you about that a little bit, in here in a little bit.
Senator Barnes?
Sure.
Just exactly what you mean by build the house?
Build the house, okay, so when you build a house, you do the foundation, right? Then you put up the walls, you do the plumbing and you do the electrical and you you start building the house. When somebody gets arrested, there's a series of steps that you gotta take and I I I kind of put it in in building the house, okay?
So complete the process.
Right, so you have your rest, which is the PC sheet, which is the foundation. Okay, you bring, they come to jail, alright, and then we do a prebooking, which is the walls, then we do a booking, which is the work. And there's just so many steps that it takes to get somebody through the system. That are mandated by court, whether it or by law, whether it's collecting DNA, because we do that on every felony. Uh to fingerprints, to whatever it is, and it takes time, okay? Who will this affect in the line county sheriff's office detention facility excluding the court process? I don't wanna talk about the court process, because. There is so many fingers into that and you try to, have you guys ever tried to get judges to agree on anything? It doesn't work. It don't work. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna go there on what it's gonna take for the court process. The bulk of the compressed work will fall upon the line county sheriff's office detention detention facility non-sworn inmate in inmate. Sorry, Nicole, sorry. Employees. It's which is the control room operators, okay? Think of the detention facility staff sworn, because we have cops in there, right? And then we have non-sworn. As as the internal workings of a transmission, the sword staff for the gears, they're the ones that go out and they move the inmates from here to there and deal with them face to face, right? And the non-sworn as the oil that keeps everything running smoothly. Those are the people in the background that are doing the paperwork. You know, there's a huge amount of paperwork. I wish I brought uh an example of the old way we were doing business. When somebody went through the process in the old way, we would get a stack of papers like this that we'd take to records, okay, stacked like that. Of type eight pages. It's a lot of work, alright? So. How, and I have nine, I have nine regular control room operators and one supervisor. And well, Nicole's gonna talk about what they do, but you can only stroke, you can only string them along and produce so much work out of one employee, okay? And we're set a twenty-four seven facility. Next. So, as I said earlier, um the how and why, I'd like to introduce you to uh control room operator supervisor Nicole Sisneros. And she'll come up and finish this off for me. Thank you for your time.
We'll actually need to go back a slide. So, um I'm Nicole Sisneros, I'm the control room operator over in the jail. I've been there for about six years now. Um so I'm gonna briefly go over who the control room operators are. I'm not sure if all of you are quite familiar, so they are the non-sworn staff. Who work in the jail with the deputies. We pretty much handle all paperwork. We handle paperwork, phones, we open all the doors, monitor cameras, we wanna watch the deputies, we wanna watch inmates, so we kinda have a lot of stuff going on. So, right now, the average booking time is about ten hours for each inmate. So that seems, it's a long time, you know, once you think about it, but that's including all the interruptions that are happening. So releases take priority over bookings. Because, you know, they were released from court, we didn't wanna hold them. So that includes the prebooking like Barnes was saying, which is all the paperwork. We're inventorying the property, we're running criminal history, we're uh checking for warrants. And then that goes down to the booking portion of it, which is a little more lengthy, which includes taking the mug shots, you wanna document and tattoos. We're also doing a brief medical screening, uh classification screening, stuff like that. And then ultimately, the deputy will obtain fingerprints or DNA based on the charges. So from start to finish, from the time they come in. To the time they obtained fingerprints is approximately ten hours per inmate. So, we intake, I think we had it up there. I think it might be on the next slide, but we intake about five and a half inmates or five point five inmates a day. So that's about fifty-five hours just on bookings. So that can be, you know, pretty time consuming. And I'm sorry, can we go back? I'm kind of bouncing. Um so, release time is an hour and a half, so, because we don't have as much to do as we do with the bookings. So with average releases, we, you know, run for any warrants, wanna make sure that they're not wanted anywhere else, then we have to. Cash out any money that they have, which is put on a card. And so, and that's. The time is pushed back a little because of all the other distractions going on, like, you know, fights or phone calls, anything else like that. So as of right now, our highest volume release days are Monday, Wednesday and Friday, and those are due to the bail hearings that we're having right now. So most of the inmates are released on those days and that that's not including, you know, people who post bail in between, because some people. Wanna get out sooner rather than later. So as I said, releases are primary over bookings, so we try to put a stop to everything that we can that's not essential and focus on those releases. So if we, if our prediction going to seven days a week for bail hearings, it'll create about four point five releases each day average. That's just a standard day. That's not even a crazy day. Um so it'll cause all our essential functions to stop and delay release process seven days a week rather than three. So we're increasing, we went from three days to seven days now. So now instead of having three predictably crazy days, we're going up to seven. So, uh, next slide, please. So like I said, releases take approximately uh an hour and a half each, so. That'll be causing an additional six point seven five hours of work, but just on the releases. That's not including the fifty-five hours we have for that day just on bookings. So, and bookings, releases, those all are all causing delays and other mandatory functions such as. Headcount, feeding, medications, uh. You know, we're spending that amount of time working on paperwork, we're not always able to watch the inmates soften as we like and or the deputies. So because ultimately, our main goal is the safety and security of the jail. We wanna make sure the inmates are safe, we wanna make sure our deputies are safe. So, because ultimately, our main goal is the safety and security of the jail. We wanna make sure the inmates are safe, we wanna make sure our deputies are safe. So, and right now, uh we have three stations, however, we're only manning two. We have one crow who is upper, upper control, and they're responsible for all the inmates in the cell blocks. So that number I had, I believe it was fifty nine average right now. So that person upper control, their sole responsibility is to watch all fifty, none of those inmates. Make sure they're following rules, make sure that they're not fighting, trying to smuggle anything. We're opening the doors for the deputies, because each door has to be opened through our control panel. Um so that's their main function. So they're up isolated watching the inmates. Lower control, that's where the bulk of the work is. So that's where inmates come in, they're the ones opening the doors, let the deputies come in, they're, you know, reviewing PC sheet, making sure we have court dates for these inmates. Then we have, then we're monitoring booking, we're answer, they're answering the phones. Uh they're ones responsible for releases, responsible for all those bookings. So with the, so let me say fifty five, so about, we'll say sixty two hours in the a twenty four hour day. That work is being put on one crow. Who's working lower control. So right now, they're on twelve hour shifts. So we'll say there's two crows, and we're expecting them projectively to work sixty two hours within twenty four hours. And that can be a lot. All of that?
How many people? In one crew?
So, right now, we have nine CROs, but on shift, we only have two. One's upper and the other one's lower. So, and lower control is the one who pretty much does all the paperwork.
Can we uh please hold off the questions until I have the presentation?
Um so, it's a lot of work that we're placing on them, and they have, their hands are kind of dipped a little bit in everything. So we are, you know, we wanna verify that nobody gets released if they haven't warrant. We wanna make sure that if they have, if they were, you know, domestic batteries, we do have victim notifications. So sometimes we might have to call the victim to let them know that this individual's being released. So, we don't want to miss any of these steps, because every step we do is important. But when you're putting that much work on them, you know, stuff gets, stuff gets dropped. So, we're trying to prevent any kind of errors like that occurring. We don't wanna fail. We wanna keep the public safe, you know? That's ultimately our goal. Uh so I think that's kind of just my main point is, I was trying to, you know, give a brief, this is what they're doing. Um it's, it's a lot that they're expected to do. So, line detention, non sworn employees, the control room operators, they're currently working twelve hour shifts, one an upper, one a lower. Uh twenty four hour days, there's already an abundance of tasks. So I kind of gave a brief what they're doing, but there's a lot of minor stuff that I'm not gonna bore you with, but still very important. Uh we're not gonna be able to process all our mandatory duties with our current staff levels. So remember, we have that one who's doing the bulk of the work that's gonna happen with all these new bail hearings. So, across all mandatory tasks currently staffed levels upon the implementation of seven day week bail hearings. It takes us approximately five months minimum to fully train a control room operator. And we're still building this training program, because we want people to be well informed because we want everyone, they need to know what, how court proceedings go. They need, because we have all family members calling, you know. Well, how long are they gonna be in there for? Well, what happens with this stuff, this stuff? So they need to be well informed on all steps, so they can uh let the public know. Because we're not only dealing with inmates and deputies, we're also dealing with the public who have questions about the inmates incarceration. So, takes minimum five months to do this training. Uh next slide? So, I mean, the clock's ticking, like Lieutenant Barnes was saying, at the time of arrest, no matter what time of day it is, you know. Crime doesn't stop, uh we only have short amount of time to complete the whole process. Including the completion of a relief, including completion of a release without undue delay. So, as I said, we prioritize the releases, however, there's only so much that we could do within that timeframe. Uh next one? So state bill four twenty four said to be implemented on July first. So that's six, six months away. So, if we're hoping to get our staffing levels to meet the demand, which we are not at at this point, we would kind of, you know, need to get on it a little sooner, because it takes about five months to train them at least. So, ultimately, we're just trying to make sure that we don't fail. We don't wanna fail, we don't want courts fail, deputies fail. So we're just, you know, presenting these concerns that we have. And I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Barnes to kind of finish off. Or Sheriff, okay, thank you.
So, because like, for okay, there was a hundred miles an hour, I'd write down a couple of notes here. Like I said in the beginning, the biggest reason we wanted you guys to be aware of this is because this is gonna affect the county's whole. It's not just gonna affect the sheriff's office, court system, and like Lieutenant Barnes said, I'm not gonna get into what the courts are doing either. Uh it's gonna have a piece in this, this too, uh just like our our court deputies, we have four.
Bring in a supervisor.
Bring in a supervisor assigned to court specifically in the jail. Right now, all they do Monday through Friday is deal with the court stuff. Now, we have been added to seven day weeks to that, so. Average daily population thing like Lieutenant Barnes alluded to is a little deceiving, because he wasn't correct. We used to base everything on how many people we had, and every did a survey from the state of the feds and what your average daily population is. Well, if you take all this bail reform stuff out, our average daily population right now would be more than what it was before COVID. So, so before COVID, there was a few months where we were one hundred twenty to one hundred thirty people, we have one hundred sixty five bed capability. So, bail reform stuff is taking our average population down like fifty nine, but but that's not accurate, because our arrest percentage just got up thirty percent. So if we stay on that trend, we drop down to sixteen hundred and something like in two thousand nineteen, we're back up to nineteen hundred and sixty six now. I would anticipate we're pushing two thousand something by the end of this year. Easy. Cause and effect, the more people I add to the road, which we need to do. Just like Lieutenant Barnes said, also, um you guys wanna go out there and and do as much as they can, and I gotta arrest people on a more frequent basis, if you just saturate the field, but somebody's gonna catch somebody, right? If if any of you guys, a lot of you guys probably remember the old uh operator systems, like even the party lines on the phone, or in the movie Danny Griffin and stuff, and see the operator doing. Our crows are doing that every day. I mean, they're busy on the telephone, how many phone calls you gotta do? Two thousand called a day?
Quite a bit.
Um so, doing that, the upper control room operator like Nicole, who is solely responsible for managing the inmate, watching inmates, moving the deputies in and out of the jail. On my, my jail deputies are averaged eight to ten miles a day walking inside the facility. Uh I have purposely overstaffed the jail above what I'm allotted to by budget. Um for that reason, so normally, budget wise, we're budgeted for fifteen jail deputies, and I'm trying to run eighteen to twenty in there right now. Trying to absorb some of this workload, just moving on forward guys. The one thing that's important about this is, there's, there's only four things that I'm required to do by state statute. One detention facility is number one one, all the stuff on patrol is extra. What I don't wanna have happen in the long run of this is that I have to short what everybody in the community see our database, database might patrol people to maintain something I require, that I'm required to by statute. So, so we're trying to negate that. Bottom line story, what's the sheriff's going for? Why am I telling you all this stuff? Why are we all telling you all this stuff? I don't need more sworn staff in a jail, I can manage that, but I am gonna have to go after some more civilian staff to manage the record keeping paperwork part of this and this. Um and and that's outside of whatever, the eight different district courts or did, not district courts, court systems are gonna ask for. Uh just, it's getting to be a paperwork nightmare and and way too busy in operations, just manage it with with my nine people and one supervisor. Um so ideally, we would like to go to two, at least most of the time, the two crows on duty downstairs and then one upstairs, and one upstairs not getting distracted, trying to pick up some of the phone stuff, and and away from the primary response. Outside of that, I got nothing else to say, if you guys have anything to add?
So at the time that this bill was being presented to legislators, did you supply a fiscal impact statement on this? So what dollar amount are we looking at?
I don't remember exactly what that is. Because on the early onset of this, it was, it was opposed by numerous law enforcement agencies. Most of them, I'm nervous. I won't say the single legislative bill that was opposed by. I don't, I don't remember, I can get that for you, we can figure that out. On on what we took, looking in terms of staff. And and a lot of it, we didn't know, because we didn't know where directions go, because it changed in the, and it was developing a number of times more in style outcome. Because Steve, weren't you originally talking about twenty four hours?
Yes.
Instead of forty eight, and they compromised at forty eight, so, which is, which is a good thing, the twenty four hour. But I can.
Yeah, the twenty four were basically possible. Forty eight's gonna be tough.
I could come up with a rough approximation of what we're thinking in terms of our staffing. Salary stuff.
So I think we're pushing our color between what this one simplest I was going, so the uh state legislatures once again passed a uh a law with an unfunded mandate for the counties with no funding mechanism coming from the state. Correct, so, and they uh, and they said they weren't gonna do that anymore? I just add rhetorical.
We, we just wanted to bring this once you guys attention, because this one is something that we know about now, where it's gonna, where it's gonna, and we can, we can say predictions, but they're probably more factual based than just picking something out of the wall. I'm almost gonna have, just based on past trends and stuff, so.
Well, I don't think any of us uh were surprised to have you here today, we knew it was coming down the pipe. Now it's a solution time on how we get there.
Right, Mr. Sheriff, if I may. So the sheriff and I have had a number of conversations about this from the last lifetime session all the way through till today. We are meeting tomorrow with uh sheriff, the district attorney's office, all three justice courts and the district courts to figure out what is we need to do to get this implemented by July first. Lieutenant Barnes made a, and I don't mean to be crass to the judges, but he made a very valid point. Um I, as you know, worked in that system for twenty one years with three different justices of the peace, with three different ways of running their court, three different ideas how things should be done. In two thousand eleven, we got the right idea of this, of Senate Bill three ninety nine, which would consolidate those courts into one operation, and then have a chief justice dictating the policy of the courts. I, it was one of the first tariff other meetings I've been to, was the county manager, um and and that went away. And I'm not here to say that the courts aren't working with this, but I will tell you that the courts look specifically at their operation, what they see is happening in their courtroom, maybe different what's happening at Walker River or Dayton or firmly, um begin with those issues. We're hoping that um after the meeting tomorrow, we can identify the staffing needs and and we can get all the courts to agree on some policies. So we can come back to the board, um and I will tell you, Mr. Floyd, I've had this conversation, we are gonna be coming back to you mid budget year for this year's budget that we're working right now to hire staff. Potentially, that will be a request. So when Mr. Floyd talks about the contingency, part of the reason why he's replaying kind of the contingency is we didn't budget for X number of positions for the sheriff, for the DA, for the courts. Because we wanna really do the budget, it's gonna be an issue. And then the next year's budget will probably be adding on to that as well, depending on what what we come up with the next. This meeting will be the, whatever, third Friday of every month until we get a plan together. Um and we get everybody on the same shooting music to get this press, it's, it's a huge issue for everybody around us. Um again, we're more problematic than most counties, because we have to have four of them. Four community bases, for law enforcement, for substations, three courts. Fortunately, we don't, don't have a fourth justice court right now. Um the two municipal courts, we have to work with, city of firmly is easy, because the sheriff provides law enforcement up there. City of Arlington is more challenging, because they provide their own law enforcement to work through that process as well, how we get all these things addressed. My point is, is we are working on developing a plan, coming back to the board with here's what we need to do to address this, or the funding we need to, to required to make this work. Um and and you don't have a choice. Between the Supreme Court decision in state Nevada and Nevada legislature, we truly don't have a choice. The last thing I'll leave you with is that, um I've heard, because I've heard this from members of the community, who cares? They're just bad guys. Why, why are you giving him more rights than you should have? The constitution is very clear, until you are convicted, you have the same rights that a person on the outside has. We have a constitutional obligation to ensure that these people are able to get to a bail hearing in the time required by state statute. And if the court levies a reasonable bail, responsible bail for that particular person, not based upon a lot of the factors the public thinks they are, it has to be based upon the severity of the crime, the danger to the community, those kinds of issues. And then determine whether they're gonna be released on holding cognizance. I will tell you, from my time in the jail, OR was, was something that just didn't happen. The judges like to keep them in. So when I saw the numbers today of the number of ORs, I'm like, holy cow. Um but that, that is, it's a big issue, it's gonna be a big issue for the next two years until we get this, this process worked out. I concur with the sheriff, I've conferred with the sheriff on the issue, the civilian staff, um since we created the CRO positions. And and that was back in the nineties, we've never had enough of that, those civilian positions.
So one of the biggest things is, is, is we're not the only soldier who's by, district attorney, right, a piece of this, it's like county manager, who works on that piece of this. The biggest thing that that I wanna try to do is, the whole reason we gave you our, just our viewpoint today, is this potentially could lead the county to huge liability issues. Done the liability lawsuits, and we wanna try to, try to keep that minimized as much as possible.
You just kind of dovetailed in what I was gonna bring up, but from a different aspect. Is anybody gonna keep stats on these OR guys that are gonna be no shows for their next hearing? Or they're gonna go out and commit another crime, and oh, we released them on OR, so we shouldn't have done that, and now they killed somebody or done something. I mean, I see a lot of public safety issues in there, I know, there's gotta be a fine balance of the public safety and constitutional rights. I'm all about constitutional rights, they are absolutely innocent, so proven guilty. But there also needs to be, you know, checks and balances for the community at large that's not, you know, hasn't been arrested. So I'm just really wondering if, who is gonna be the uh the statistician for that, is gonna be something your office or the DA's office or the courts?
I'm gonna say that we're the ground keepers. Maintain the ground, maintain the the stability of of the yard, pick up the trash, and we need to. As far as keep track of who lets who out, which is why this question for this, in different courses.
So I'm just wondering how many of these guys that are on OR and stay in the area are gonna be picked up again or released on OR, or picked up again and released on OR? Yeah.
That's happening today.
Oh, I'm just gonna mention, I'm glad to see that there's kind of a fast train on this, um since we do have a lag time for training. And it sounds as though everything's gonna hit the fan on the first of July, and hopefully we can take care of it at that time. Appreciate a big driver being tomorrow.
This, this kind of goes like your dating dog, Bridge, I don't expect the bridge to kill the dating, but, but if we can get started on it now, let's get some wheels rolling for it, it's here. The only question for me?
Yeah, Sheriff, great.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Sheriff, this question, is there a provision in the law? Or what is, how much discretion do your deputies have? If you want, if somebody commits an offense that normally would end up with them going to jail, you have the ability to give him a promise to appear or or something, sometimes citation to keep them, keep them out of that revolving door, but yet still have them put on those, so they have to go to court to deal with it.
So, depends on where you wanna go with that question. And the reason I said, because there's also recent legislation passed on this, you mean, offenses are no longer criminal offenses. So, so our officers have discretion on a misdemeanor crime, they could cite like all these trespasses. Soon arresting somebody on trespass, they can cite them on trespass, set a court date. And they basically a traffic ticket and they would show up on that court date. So you have that discretion. You don't have to wrestle every offense. During the COVID restriction, matter of fact, we put something out, don't arrest anybody unless it goes to your belt. Our numbers only drop once we've done it. So and that was for a pretty, we did that for like six months or so. And so so the numbers didn't drastically decline. And I think that comes from from operating a business where you don't get to work from home, it's 24/7 no matter what. And most of the bad guys don't pay attention to rules anyways. So so we do have discretion on trying to limit some of that. Steve could probably answer this question better than I can as far as this really affects stuff. We kind of digress on a different tangent, but but yes, the short answer is read your digest version. Yes, we do have discretion on this.
So.
So DUIs, domestic battery.
I understand. This, like Lieutenant Barnes says, it's a revolving door. I'm just trying to thank you. To find a way to keep less people going into the door and there's less people going to worry about pushing out the other side.
Cause and effect, more citations I write and more stuff you've got to process outside of control of the environment. And that has an effect across the board, so.
Yep.
Mr. James.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. I'll just, my belief is you can't do the time, don't do the crime. But I do want to thank Lieutenant Barnes and Nicole for their presentation today and just offered to those two that the sheriff has offered to take you to the lunch today, so.
Might be jacking it off.
I just want to say, Nicole, Josh, enjoy lunch. But no, thank you very much for the presentation. Obviously, we kind of knew that this was going to be coming forward. But it's always nice to hear kind of a breakdown, even if you left some things out that are important. You know, kind of a breakdown of what the day looks like. And what you're up against, so.
I mean, invitation still stands. Anybody wants to come and go through the facility, you're more welcome to go sit with Lieutenant Barnes. Just kind of see what it is on the basis. I know that you guys have done that, so.
Yeah, I haven't been there in a while. Maybe it's time to come visit.
It's changed quite a bit. I know I was referring.
If you do, just put something hidden on your purse in some place and we'll let you through the barn.
Okay, any public comment on on the presentation?
Is that open to the public?
Ma'am, can you please step up the podium inside in? Say the name for the record.
I'm Hannah. Um, is it open to the public?
Absolutely. We have nothing to hide.
Scary when those doors close open.
I've been in Cook County jail in Chicago. As a visitor?
Anything else for me?
Is Kevin buying lunch for all of us?
My comments are out of order. Thank you, Sheriff. I love your staff as well. Thank you, guys. All right, um, do you guys need a break real quick or do you want to push on for two minutes? Uh, we are now on 14E Possible Action Director Staff Schedule Commission meetings at the Lion County Senior Center, Burnley, the Lion County Library, Burnley, or the Lion County Administrative Complex in Urington. But commission meetings on March 17th, June 16th, and September 15th.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve 14E.
Well, I need you to pick us. So let me give you some background.
We'll hold the, we'll hold the motion in advance.
So the the issue is, as we implemented the ordinance to move the meetings around. The first time around, it firmly wasn't a problem due to court issues because municipal court is held in the city council chambers. They are no longer able to meet our needs to have board meetings in council chambers. So what I'm asking of the board is you want to meet in the senior center, you want to meet in the library, or do you want to skip firmly and meet in Urington for that meeting?
I'd say the Lion County Senior Center.
Oh, yeah.
You want to amend that? You want to amend your motion and?
Ah, yes. Thank you, Chairman Gray. I'd like to make the motion that we attempt to secure the Lion County Senior Center in Burnley for the above or below mentioned dates.
Second, maybe a motion in a second, a discussion. Any public comment? You want to go to all the paper? I, I, all opposed. Motion passed, so that'll be at the senior center. Yeah, item 14F, Possible Action, authorize county manager to author, sign, and submit a letter to the Codell supporting the city of Burnley with their public lands bill. County manager.
Mr. Chair, member of the commission, we do have some people in the audience present to discuss the land bill in firmly what their request is. And we want to provide support to see affirming regard to the lands bill, ITC operation from the board. So if you want, Mr. Chair, to ask those people to give your their 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 comments and then we can talk about a motion.
Uh, who wants to do the presentation, Chris? There you go.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Commissioners, county manager, my name is Chris Thompson. I'm the project manager for Tahoe Reno Industrial Center and for our new project in the city of Burnley called TRI 2. We have hired the lobbyists, which is the Porter Group, John Porter, and his folks, which are, which have created the bill and are pushing it through Congress. And we have the congressman and Stephanie and Rachel from his office from the Porter Group office on the here attending FBB. So if I could ask Rachel to to put up quickly the first map, just a bit of background here.
Let me, yeah, just up share here.
Hi there. I'm Stephanie Walker with Porter Group and Rachel Lair from Porter Group is also on. And we're here with Chris and the TRI team in Burnley. So we're the ones sharing virtually. Nice to see you.
Great. So so this map kind of shows the the northern Nevada trade area, if you will. Get Reno and Sparks on the left. Tahoe Reno Industrial Center is in yellow and in in red on the right is our new project, TRI 2. That is all within the city limits of Burnley. And just quickly, the background, what is pushing industrial development to the east and into into Burnley? Right now in Reno and Sparks, within that entire metro area, there is very little space left for industrial development. You might find a corner lot, you might find an empty building, but nothing in terms of new industrial development of any size. The anywhere in that area, TRI, we started with 107,000 acres. We are now sold out, except for about the last two or three sites that our sales team is still marketing. It's a very small amount of acreage. The new bulk owner of TRI was bought 70,000 acres out of our original 107,000 acres is moving very slowly. I'm sure we're all familiar with the background of the legislature and what happened there recently regarding that. But he appears to be moving pretty slowly going forward. So there's not much new developable land available that's left in TRI. So that pushes everything out to the east into Burnley. There is a massive amount of developer interest going on right now in Burnley. To give you a good example, there was a 2,400 acre tract of land in the city of Burnley. We bid 33 million to buy that land and we got outbid significantly by by another bidder. So there is a lot of focus and a lot of interest. And the reason is because Burnley is on the I-80 corridor and the UP corridor and the natural gas transmission line corridor and the internet of trunk lines in that same corridor. It is a natural extension of where industrial development is going. And so now that we're almost out of Tahoe Reno Industrial Center, our two primaries, Don Roger Norman and Lance Gilman, refuse to retire. It's in their, it's in their soul. This is, this is what they do. They love it. And so they picked a new area. It's about 20,000 acres in TRI 2. That's about the same size as the built out area is right now in TRI. And so Stephanie or Rachel, if we could now go to the second map, the RFP map. Uh, the RFP map showing the RFP properties. There we go. So this shows our project area. It's bounded by Burnley in the north, 95A on the east, the city limit boundary line on the south, and the Story County, Lion County line on the west. The pink sections, each square is a section of land, 640 acres. The pink sections were already passed in a 2015 lands bill that Burnley has control over through the BLM. It's still BLM property now, but the 2015 lands bill authorized that for turnover of Burnley already. The blue sections labeled TRI 2, our principal, Don Roger Norman, has already purchased. We bought, so Roger has purchased about 10 square miles of land already in this in this project area. And of course, the problem is it's still checkerboard. A lot of that checkerboard land in there is still owned by the BLM. So let's go to the next, let's go to the next slide, the future land acquisition. There we go. So the the purple area is land that Roger has purchased or we have the ability to purchase. The green is all is all BLM land and the brown is privately owned property. So the the BLM land that is covered in this lands bill that we are pushing in Congress is basically in the southern half of the project area in the green sections. The Porter Group assisted us in setting up a conference with the BLM regional manager. BLM already has this land on their disposal list. So it's all, it's ready to go, but for a lands bill. And as you can see, combining the the purple, which Roger owns or controls, and the green, it would give us a lot of contiguous land. And for a for a development of this size, the infrastructure cost can be can be extensive for TRI. Essentially the same size, maybe just a little bit larger, the the built out area. Our company's put in about 175 million in infrastructure over the years. So that's the kind of money that it takes to create a project that is is able to attract some of the best Wall Street street companies. So for an infrastructure expense of that amount, it takes quite a bit of contiguous land for development in order to make that economically doable. So the the bill that we're asking you guys to support today would 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 free up the the green sections on the southern half or two thirds of the project area and make them available for for currently. We think that if we go to the next slide, please, Rachel. Concept overlay. So this gives a rough concept of what our project would look like if everything went perfectly. And we know that it won't be. We know that we may not get every, you know, section of land. But you can see there are different bubbles within the project area. The commercial is is close to 95A. Then maybe some light industrial kind of further in to the west. And then maybe the heavy industrial toward the far west side of the project. We also have plans to have about the the western third preserved for or environmental green space that would include care of the wild horses. It would include care of the bighorn sheep, which which are which Lance Gilman repopulated in the Virginia range about 10 years ago, outdoor recreation and just kind of environmental open space. Which were required to have in order to get through Congress. So the benefits are is that if we can get 12,000 acres or so of industrial space, we probably, we have to cut a a portion out for affordable housing in order to get it through Congress, which we coordinated with Congress already. It would give us about 10,000 acres of developable land, about half the size of TRI. And currently TRI with about 20 to 22,000 acres of developable industrial land already has on the ground today 25,000 jobs, 15 billion in investment and capital investment from Wall Street companies and an annual payroll approaching a billion. We don't think this would be necessarily at that level because the the tech and the high water users such as, you know, big data centers or or big manufacturers like Tesla is probably wouldn't be as attractive to them because of the limitations in the entire area on water. But for Wall Street companies, distribution centers, fulfillment centers, light manufacturing, this is perfect. You know, Lance Gilman has said for the last three years, he believes that that the Burnley area and that I-80 corridor is now, will be and is trending to be the economic or the epicenter for economic development in the entire region of Northern Nevada. Obviously, that capital investment brings revenue to the to the local governments. It brings high paying jobs. The average job in TRI is over $25 an hour. Many of these Wall Street companies provide great benefits. And so we think this is great for the city of Burnley, great for the county. And and which is why we are betting on the come funding, they're lobbying for this lands bill, hoping that Burnley remembers who it is that's getting this lands bill through. So Stephanie or Congressman Porter, do you guys have anything to add?
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, we we are in a good spot with it in terms of congressional support, of course. As with anything, we need to work both sides of the aisle and some feedback that we got, which was very good feedback, was to make sure we're partnering with you folks here at Lion County. So that's what we're here to do. It's a very isolated bill, which I think Chris communicated pretty well. I just want to clarify for the public also that what we're asking for and what's on the table today is a letter from the county supporting a bill which would transfer these checkerboard pieces to the city of Burnley. It doesn't endorse the TRI project, even though we wanted to tell you what our plans were out of, you know, transparency and just so you know what's going on. But the TRI, our team, the TRI folks do not automatically get any land. We have to publicly bid for it, just like anyone else. And this would not be an endorsement of our project, just the transfer of the parcels. And with that, I think we're we're open to questions from the commissioners.
Thanks, Stephanie. One final comment. We are in the final stretch on this bill. And the current status is this, on the House side, the bill has been drafted and introduced by Congressman Abbott. We have the support of Congressman Horford, Congressman Lee, which are key, especially Congressman Horford, who has a special relationship with the chairman of the Natural Resources Committee. It has been referred out to that committee. So we are in, we're in good shape there. When Senator Rosen receives your letter of support, which we're asking for and hopefully will come, she will introduce it into the Senate and it should typically move faster in the Senate. So we're kind of in the final stretch and a long way down the road here. And we certainly appreciate your support for this bill. And with that, Chairman Gray, I can take any questions.
Any questions from board?
Thanks, Chairman Gray. I don't know that we discussed this at all here today, but anyone that's driven through Burnley and really any daylight hours and early morning and definitely into the evening knows that traffic is terrible and we hear this kind of commotion going on. It seems to me that we're looking at joining this at the Wadsworth exit with, I don't know if that was touched on.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Diggs. So correct. And as part of this project, no one wants streams of trucks running through the metro area of Burnley. There's a matter of fact, by comparison at TRI, I think our current number is 5,500 to 6,000 big rigs a day going in and out of TRI. So so as part of our project, you'll see on our concept map a interchange, an upgraded interchange of Wadsworth and a bypass road going through our project area and then connecting back into 95A down about two thirds of the way down on the project. And if you could picture that being like USA Parkway, which which Roger and Lance built back in 2005. It's a, it's a clean arterial for industrial traffic primarily. You could also take automobiles through there to get to work, whatever, but primarily meant to divert that that truck traffic around the city of Burnley. We've already had, great, I've had two meetings personally. And it was Roger Norman meeting with the Cole Lortensen, the assistant director. meeting with the Cole Lortensen, the Assistant Director of NDOT, who, he comes from here. So he's, he's been well aware, and he said this bypass road has been a long kind of a, on the to-do list for, for NDOT, and he's well aware of that. But thank you, Commissioner Jacobson, for the question.
No, I'm gonna bite my tongue.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson.
Now, just, just curiosity, say, where on that map does the existing Speedway?
I think it's about, it's kind of where that red box is or somewhere in that, that area off of ninety-five A, I believe, and that race track. Yeah, we tried to acquire that, we weren't able to.
Just south there is a really nice agate field out there.
I think Commissioner Heller may know probably where that is better than me. I think it's somewhere around that, that red square, I mean, just south of that.
Yeah, I was trying to picture it on there, but anyways, yeah, right up in that area.
Where that green is on the right hand side, that's where those junkyards are.
Any further questions on the board? Any public comment?
Yes, just, I am hands up. Is there a representative from the city of Furley who said you want to transition around this city of Furley?
Can you address the board, please?
Oh, is there anyone here from the city of Furley to state their position on this land transfer? Also, we just talked about, we spoke earlier in regards to the water in Furley. Where's the water coming from to, to progress in development? And do you own the land currently for this bypass road, or will it be eminent domain?
Thank you. First, let me go in reverse order. We have no intention, no plans, and, and we will not support eminent domain period. If, if we don't get the land from the lands bill enough to build that road, we will seek to acquire it through purchase. We did the same thing with, with USA Parkway. Second was the question on water, and Don Roger Norman has purchased about two hundred acre feet of water that is spent at the city of Furley. That's more than enough to get this project off the ground for the next ten years, probably. Up until Switch built their data center and Tesla got up and running in TRI. When we had about a hundred and twenty businesses in TRI, that was all powered by four hundred acre feet of water. So two hundred acre feet of water will go a long way. The, the, what was the first question, man?
Chris, can I interrupt your, this is not pertinent to supporting the lands bill. That's, that's all pertaining to what your plans may be, should you acquire the property. I'm gonna stop commenting right here if that's okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other public comment on the lands bill?
Mr. Chair, Josh Bulley, Lyon County Comptroller?
Yes.
Just one note, there is a parcel that's BLM owned that's shaded as being potentially acquired, which is the same parcel that our Eagle Ridge or Peter Site for Dispatches on. And I would just wonder, is that something that we could get an easement for that site? Or are we gonna have a new owner of the underlying land that we have to deal with?
I probably answered that, but we'd probably have to work with the city of Furley once they acquire it and work it out with them. And then if they decide to sell it, then the use that would go with the, the property.
And we, we experienced the same thing at TRI, there's communication sites, cell phone sites out there. Those are easy, easy to work with. And, you know, that's, that, that actually helps in development to have those communication sites, other type facilities in place and operating.
Okay, I do have a question now. Okay, was my understanding that you had reached out to staff to make sure that we identified any conflict properties?
I know, I know.
Had that occurred?
Yeah, and I know we've, we've provided the lands bill and the APN numbers in the lands bill. I know that provided to the staff. So that's in the public record.
Have we had an opportunity to look for those conflicts?
I have not seen this. I don't, I can't answer that question. For the record, that was county manager answering that, sorry.
Because I specifically had asked when we were on the Zoom meeting that, that be provided and that we make sure that those.
Stephanie, could you address that about the APNs listed in the lands bill?
Yeah, they're all posted in the lands bill, so I can walk through that with your manager. Sorry, sorry for the confusion. At the conclusion of this, happy to have any contingency of any vote you take to make sure that that's still correct.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so you were indeed correct. If you recall, well, I've clarified when I recall, when we passed the economic development, you're in Lyon County, wherever the landfill was, Nevada Copper, all the land went to the city of Yerick. The city of Yerickton then sold off parcels of that to Nevada Copper or, or has, so has the option of about three, four thousand acres to sell off to private entities or for Lyon County. So if and when the landfill gets passed, then we will not be negotiating with Chris. We'll be negotiating with the city of Furley as to those parcels that we, we need for our operation, whether it be computer sites, future disposal sites, those kinds of things. We'll be having those conversations with the city of Furley. I have that preliminary conversation with the city of Furley, verify that process. And that's, so that's exactly what we'll be doing, but we're not gonna get in any.
Well, and that's where I was going with this. They don't get to say what we get to do. I know that the land goes to Furley. I just wanted to make sure that we identify that, you know, if there was any conflicts, we would have that discussion.
And the other issue.
I do remember you.
To, to clarify, to clarify, the question was asked, the city of Furley is not here, but this is their lands bill.
Exactly.
The lands bill is predominantly to support industrial growth in the city of Furley. And that's why Mr. Thompson and others are here to discuss that side of it. But it is a city of Furley lands bill. They have worked very closely with the folks at TRI, with Congressman Porter's office, to bring this here in quest that we provide some form of written support to our congressional delegation. What helps Furley will help the county. Amen. Yeah, I might have remembered that answer from my days working with Stephanie and Congressman Abbott's office. So, yeah, we worked that, that was forever ago now, but any further comments? As they relate to the lands bill? Okay, Jeff, I've got a question for you, and I don't think it's any, any secret, I'm in support of this. Would it be out of the question to co-sign this letter with you?
So I was gonna address that issue. The agenda is written the way it was written so I could get it out quickly. But normally, when I do those letters, the board chair is either signed it or has signed it in addition with.
I'll draw it down to sign it. This is the kind of development I think we need to see in a county. You know, where we, you know, I'm always supportive of counties acquiring the land that's within their boundaries for their uses, whether it be economic or open space, whatever it is. But this is, this is a good thing for us all the way around, no matter what comes of the land at any end. I'd like to, to move. Is there someone online? Mr. Belang.
Troy, I can't see from here.
Hey there. Just a comment on this. I'm, I'm kind of disappointed and concerned that here we have a developer coming in asking the county to support a land swap with BLM. And yet, the public has no access to these documents. Really don't think that's fair to the public, especially when we talk about BLM being public lands and our county getting on board with this. It's not that I'm opposed to the development. It's just, you know, as a member of the public, we have no clue because it was not included in the agenda.
Is that all, Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Any further comment? That's Tony Stevenson.
Mr. Chair, I'm moved that we authorized the county manager to, to author sign and submit a letter to our registered delegation supporting the city of Furley with their public lands bill.
We have a motion and two seconds by Mr. Henderson, and the second was by Commissioner Keller or Jacobson, your choice. Any further board discussion? Tony, is your hand still up? Okay. Any, any further public comment? Single public comment will loop the vote. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All approved. Motion passes by all.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item fourteen G, possible action, direct staff.
We're up, finally!
Alrighty, item fourteen G, possible action, direct staff move forward with the removing, with the removing of the members of the Stagecoach Advisory Board to consider consolidating with Silver Springs Advisory Board. Jeff, page, kind of, and page, that's.
Correct. So we have not, Jeff, page, I meant for the record. The Stagecoach Advisory Board has not met in a considerable period of time, has not participated in any training, nor do we have a great deal of, of return correspondence. Staff is recommending that we remove those members and have the board consider consolidating Silver Springs Stagecoach into one or reopening, you can reopen it back up to see if we get people in Stagecoach to participate in their fight. The pros and cons of the, of the consolidating is we know that Silver Springs meets on a regular basis. There's strong leadership on that advisory board to kind of get people going. I mean, if down the road, it was determined that, hey, this is going well, and we could go back to having Stagecoach on our advisory board. Our, our big issue now is, is either we do something with Stagecoach Advisory Board by trying to get new people back involved or do something by including them in Silver Springs into a consolidated board.
Take this one. I kind of agree with the record. I think before we do anything like consolidating or getting the advisory board, we need to figure out and actually bring the public, you know, what the barriers are, why they haven't met. Are they having technical issues? Are there health issues with some of the folks? But at this point, I cannot support that. It's a very unique community with very distinct and separate needs from Silver Springs. And I don't think they would, even though they, even though they can't get their board up and running at this point, I don't think they would take very kindly to having basically Silver Springs make their decisions or recommendations for them, probably take it as well as they would having Dayton do it. So I, I cannot and will not support this going forward.
Just real quickly, I, I know we have another agenda item to appoint another member. What's that put us in, in our number of members there currently?
I don't have that information. Aaron is unable to be there today.
So we don't know if that's gonna constitute a quorum or not?
I believe, I believe, I believe we have, I, I believe we have enough members to have a quorum. They just don't meet.
They're just not having meetings. Well, I wanted to make a suggestion, not, this is not a motion, just something to talk about amongst the board here. Because it's been brought up before about consolidating with Silver Springs. Silver Springs doesn't want to make decisions. I'm speaking for the board because I've heard them talk over, they don't want to make decisions for Stagecoach. Stagecoach doesn't want them to make decisions for Stagecoach. But I do have a suggestion that if there, if we've got members, can we reach out to Silver Springs Advisory Board and have a special meeting in Silver Springs inviting Stagecoach for a meeting and discuss what they may be able to do to help Stagecoach get things rolling in the right direction? I mean, Silver Springs keeps getting thrown out as the one that operates every month on a regular basis. But, you know, I've, I've heard them say, hey, we're, we're willing to sit down with anybody and, and help. Just a suggestion to try to maybe get one board to help the other board. Maybe there's a disconnect between them and county staff.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. I guess I really do value advisory boards and their input. However, we've been discussing mandatory trainings, open meeting law violations, and being really, this board is held accountable for their open meeting laws. If I'm not mistaken, am I correct on that, Mr. Page?
The board is not held accountable for their, they're held accountable from a perspective of liability, but as far as open meeting law violation, that, that is the, that board holds that ownership.
So at any rate, we've, we've asked them to do these trainings, and I, I hear what you're saying, Chairman Gray. And I will support an extension, but they gotta get, this is, this should serve as a wake-up call to get your act together, or we don't even have an advisory board from Stagecoach. That's my opinion. So today would be the, you know, whatever day for an extension, I'm getting your stuff together. And if they don't, I don't, I don't see penalizing Stagecoach or Silver Springs. Not that that would be a penalty, but if they're not gonna agree on things and they don't want to work together, they're not gonna work together. So I just think that if that's the case, and they don't, they don't pick it up in whatever timeframe we may set, then we just abandon their advisory board altogether, and they do not have one. I don't think putting it, putting them with Silver Springs is the answer.
I agree with Commissioner Jacobson. That's a much better answer. Dissolve it. And then they just go directly to their commissioner or commissioners. They have a direct line. But I would like to see, what I like to do is still try, except I've been trying to communicate with the board members to see what's going on and get them going. I'd like to have a little more time to try and do that once again, and fire them up and find out, let's say, technical issue. Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Commissioner Jacobson. The problem is that they're not getting the required training. And I know that Aaron has been on them to get the training. There comes a point when, okay, you know, if you want to serve your committee, community, and I don't think there's anybody up here that is a bigger proponent of our citizen advisory boards than I am. They are very valuable to us. But if you want an advisory board dedicated to your community, and you don't want to go through the training, and you can't have meetings, then I agree that we just dissolve the board and not combine them. I would like to see something where maybe we give them thirty days to come up with complaints. And they, you know, put a, put a notice, something. I agree. This is a wake-up call. If you want to have your advisory board, get the training you need to have, ten meetings, and provide input to us because we depend on your input. So I'll get to my self-talks.
No, you're good. Yeah, I agree with comments that have been made here, and we need to, and even when we, even if we do, we have to dissolve them, I would still like to see an announcement go out. And maybe with all of the requirements for the training requirements, or anybody that applies, they know that's gonna be a requirement before they even apply. Not sure what the announcements look like right now, but I know there's people in Stagecoach that would, that would step up and do it, and now we just need to get those folks and then find out what's going on with the current members. So without, if we want to make a motion, we want to table it.
How about some public comment?
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry, we're gonna pull a comment.
You're letting them dictate. You can take a motion and then go to public.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, yeah, we've been taking a motion. Let's, uh, let's take the motion, and then we'll go to public comment. That's what, that's what we've been doing. I'm sorry, doing this and throwing mistakes, but you'll still be here for the comment.
That's what I'm looking at. So we need Chairman Gray, I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to move forward with giving, reaching out to the Silver Stage, the Stagecoach Advisory Board and give them a deadline of February seventeenth to come in compliance with the open meeting regulations. And that gives, then that meeting is in Silver Springs, so on the set February seventeenth. So again, direct staff to reach out to the Stagecoach Advisory Board to come into compliance with open meeting laws by February seventeenth, or their board will be dissolved.
And other training, and scheduling meetings.
Well, and other training, because that's not the only training they have.
That's all correct, but, but, so they do, they do that. We still have, we still have not had a meeting in months.
It'd be three-tiered. They would have to one meet, they would have scheduled a meeting, they would have to have a quorum, and they would have to meet all their training requirements.
That month may be a short timeline. I was trying to get it in the closest area to them.
If I could suggest, I would suggest sixty days.
Yeah, no way they'll meet in, that's just setting them up to fail by the seventeenth.
Sixty, sixty days and all the, Mr. Chair, I just been advised that they normally do the training, trains up until, including March. So the district attorney, I've had a discussion and feel it's best to go ninety days to get that, get everything covered in that ninety-day period.
And you okay with that?
Ninety days, all the required trainings.
And could I add, an amendment as well, would you be amenable to?
Setting the meeting dates?
Well, no, being amenable to, if they don't meet the requirements, the board faces dissolution of its members.
Yeah.
The board faces dissolution. Now, I want to keep the board, we may need to find other members, but there are members that are already in the spots now.
Okay, they want to restate the motion as a law, please.
Shall they reset where we're over?
So direct staff to reach out to the Stagecoach Advisory Board, giving them a ninety-day timeframe to meet required trainings, set meeting dates or their Stagecoach Advisory Board will be dissolved.
We amend that to, not that board will be dissolved, the members will be, will be dissolved. That way we just.
Their board.
Oh, no, no, that's their members. Yeah, their members, but we can still, our members, fine, people that want to do that.
Members. Exactly. Members will be, board members will be.
Got that?
Yeah.
Is it recorded yet?
I was just going to say, you're so lucky it's recorded, right? You can listen to it like several times.
My, my amendment was just to make sure we still have a board available and we needed to solve the board later, then we do it.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we don't.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any further board discussion? And now we'll go to public comment. And please step up the podium, sign in and state your name.
Hi, everybody, I'm Betty Retzer. I live in Stagecoach and basically I'm going to say, we, the people of Stagecoach, do not want to be part of Silver Springs. We don't want to be a suburb of Dayton or Silver Springs as we've stated before. Vita, thank you for reiterating that. The second thing is, is that at current level, we have two people still on the board of the advisory board. And I know for sure, one of those people has attended training in the past as she was, she's an active board member when the board was active. The other thing is, is that since there are only two members active on the board, you can't have a meeting because there's no quorum, you can't take any actions. So it's kind of a vicious circle in that with two members, you can't have a meeting. So that's partly why they haven't had a meeting and also because of COVID and, you know, any number of reasons. There is currently a person that is, was on the board and she has a new application in for the next item on the agenda. I would propose and ask for your consideration on this, that it be made into a three-person board instead of five. That way we will already have a quorum on the board with the two that are currently there and the one that wants to reapply. And I would like to ask what have you guys done to help us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you helped find members for the board? We have two people here that are interested in Stagecoach, one in particular that's our commissioner. What have you done to help our group? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, for the record, if the board would like to take a look at making Stagecoach a three-person board, when we get to the agenda request, you can make that request and then we'll have to write a resolution to change the makeup of that advisory board. And we've done that a number, with a number of other boards.
Diane Hansel, Stagecoach resident. I teach theater and part of theater is always trying to solve a problem. That's your, your goal when you act out stories, is to solve a problem. The fact that you jumped so quickly to dissolving the, the community's voice and not finding a resolution is frightening. Each of us that represent Lyon County, we're so unique, our areas, especially Stagecoach. And I find that frightening quite really, that you jump so quickly to dissolving our, our voice.
Lynda Cash, Non-House Advisory Board. First of all, as far as the training goes, I can't imagine why anybody doesn't attend the training. I mean, it's on Zoom, it's so simple, it's so easy to attend. People in my, on my advisory board who don't have the ability to use a computer, they come to my teen little office and we sit from a little iPad and we do the training. So not to do the training, there is no excuse for that, in my opinion. The problem I have personally is all the restrictions that have been put on the advisory boards recently by Lyon County to go into the computer age. I find it very difficult. It's a challenge every single, every single time I try to post my agenda, post the minutes, post the audio, even do the audio because the equipment they provided me is the cheapest that money can buy. It's not reliable, I don't like it, I've asked for replacements, I've never gotten anything. I think if a board is struggling and they're struggling with the technical, yes, I realize staff has more than offered to help come train. But maybe, maybe staff needs to work a little bit more with these struggling advisory boards to maybe allow them to go back to the hard, submitting hard copy things, go back to the way we used to do it, at least until that board can get established and get running and we can make sure they have the equipments that they need to make, do all these requirements. Trust me, I've become a one person. My secretary of thirty years resigned because she's not going to have this anymore, she's not going to do it. So now it's all on me and I'm telling you, it's a struggle. So I, I ask you to please try to work with these boards, do what you can to help, get them the equipment they need. The training is no issue as far as I'm concerned, anyhow, thank you very much.
If I may.
Hold on, please, anybody else in the audience? Okay, it looks like we have Gina, Gina Lee in the audience.
Gina Lee, Dayton Advisory Board, for the record. I just want to mention two things. The, when, when you first are interested in becoming an advisory board, this came up in the, in the discussion and as you go through the application process, everything that we get from the website and everything that we get from here clearly lays out which is responsibilities are. So that's, that's made very clear as you're filling out your paperwork in your application. And in addition, the office, county manager's office has done an excellent job of, of letting us know there's training available, let's have the training. She, the, she has not only done the training, she's recorded it and made the recordings available. If you, if you can't physically attend, we see the recordings. In addition to that, about the, the technology part, I would be happy to volunteer to, to train anyone who needs training. I worked in IT for my career and I was an IT trainer. And so I'm comfortable with the new, new processes, but I understand it's not everybody does. I'd be happy to step up to do that, helping the boards with that.
May I add some input?
Yeah, we're still, well, Tony will get to you, we've got some folks here in, in the audience.
Margaret Leasing, and I'm a resident of Stagecoach and a former member of Stagecoach Advisory Board. And you guys have a hard job, I feel sorry for you. But I concur with almost everything that was said, except I do, you need to keep at least five members on the Stagecoach Advisory Board. And I know there are at least five members, probably more, that would definitely, you know, five citizens that would step up to do the job if they knew, hey, that the position was open. I mean, it's very hard to find out that it's open. I'm sorry, but Lyon County doesn't let anybody know when things are open. They go on the website, the website's pretty archaic, I'm sorry. It's really not user-friendly and most of the younger people and, and really good people that, you know, we're a, got to have it now, society, and you go into it and you try to find stuff, a lot of people just give up. They don't even try to look, look at stuff anymore on that website. They want it like that, and it's not that kind of a website. I can go in and find the stuff, but it is really kind of archaic by today's standards. But if you could get a better one, it would be nice. I'd help, to help people find what they need to find on that. And Stagecoach is an active community, you've got a lot of people would like to do and not to, you know, it used to be they went to all the meetings and yes, you got to wing COVID. I mean, for what, it's been two years now, we've been pretty isolated. So that's one of the reasons for not having meetings, people didn't go to meetings. You didn't want to get stuff, I know we didn't. And you guys need that, that input from us, so you know what's going on. And you need to go to the meetings too. How many of you attended? I mean, you're saying for all of us, you never attended a meeting in Stagecoach, I'm sure.
Have they met in the last year?
Well, I'll tell you what, you never saw it from me, never saw it from the community come in.
That's not.
You know, I mean, no, you guys are, you.
I know, but there hasn't been a meeting since Mr. Jacobson put on the board.
You guys represent all of us, you don't just represent Lynda, you represent all of us. We, we go all of a sudden, you recruited all of us, so you should all take at least one meeting. Actually every six months, that should be your job, really and truly, that is your job. Because you represent me, just as well as you represent the people that live in your, your area. That's your job too. But you do have a hard job, I know.
That's tough.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else?
Can I say one more thing?
Maybe you had your, you had your.
I'm Michael Klein. I'm a former member of Stagecoach Advisory Board, I was there for a short while. I'm aware of the problem, the problem that the Stagecoach Advisory Board is having. I have spoken with the lady who has issued an application and this happened months ago, I mean, before May, the last meeting they had. She happened to see me and she says, I don't have enough people for a meeting, how do I do an agenda? And I advised her, just say, lack of quorum, meaning canceled. I had no idea it was going to go on for this long. But I, I did speak to her Saturday, she does have some people lined up. I think she just need, they just need a little kick in the butt. Because I'm sure, like Michael says, Betty, that there are no people in Stagecoach to have a board. But I commend you on giving them some time to get their stuff together. And let's hope this can go back because like we all know, Stagecoach and Silver Springs are like step-childrens. They just don't want to agree. So I, I thank you for giving them an extension and I will speak to people. I'm sure the other people who have spoken here will talk to people and I think we can get this board back together. Because I know when I was on that board, they got a lot accomplished. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else? Okay, well, this time we'll move to Zoom. And Tony, you've got your hand up?
My name is Timothy Blank, I'm a resident in Stagecoach.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you didn't have your hand up, there are two others with their hand up. So we got Tony Stevenson and then.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And we'll come back to you, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Tony Stevenson, Dayton, also Lyon County Democratic Chair. I'm kind of concerned about the quick response as other, as somebody else brought up, that the first move would be to dissolve the board and consolidate it with Stagecoach. To me, that's just one more step in disenfranchising people from engagement in their community. When I look at a situation like this, I look at, it wasn't that long ago when we elected our own citizen advisory boards. And maybe that's the solution, getting back to where it's not a political appointment, but it's actually a state where people get to participate in their community about who represents them to the county. That's really important. I think it's, this is kind of a symptom of that change. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Angela, Amanda, there we go.
Good afternoon, I would just like to say that I did like to hear that Silver Springs does not want to adopt Stagecoach as part of their advisory board. Stagecoach is a very different town than Silver Springs and Dayton. And I, I do agree that Stagecoach Advisory Board has been lacking, we have not been meeting. We do need to step up. And I would like to say that I'm willing to help in any way. I have not applied for the advisory board in the past because frankly, I thought somebody else would. And I did read the bylaws and I do know that some of my own voice would be quieted. But at this point, I am willing to step up with either assistance or with an application, whatever is needed to assist with this applicant, with this advisory board to get back on track and to meet. I have been to many meetings. It, I thank the past members, they've done a good job. I don't know if it's because of COVID that this is lacking, I don't really know the reason, but I am more than willing to assist with getting this advisory board back on track. And I'd also like to say that this is very important to me. I am a resident of Stagecoach and this is so important that I'm actually listening to this meeting while I'm on holiday in the Caribbean on a private island. This, this is so important to me that I took a time out today and I do have to apologize because we were the one yelling that they're finally up, because we've been listening to this all day and we just got internet connected this morning. And this is very important, I have been listening and I do thank you for putting this off to a future date and we will get it together. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda, enjoy the trip. Yep, Timothy, I think you, you had comments or your, your name is up there, maybe there's your hand, but if you've got something, go ahead and go at this time.
My name is Timothy Blank, I live in Stagecoach and as a matter of fact, this morning I was filling out the application to apply to become a member of the advisory board. And one thing I would mention, just like Tony had said, you know, I, I think that reducing the number of members to three is not a real good move. After all, look at the number of justices on the Supreme Court, they don't have three. So I will, I will be submitting my application and I do have an interest in the community. I've only lived here about six and a half years, but I'm pretty familiar with the community and a lot of the residents. And hopefully, with my background, I'd be able to provide a lot of assistance on the advisory board, thank you.
Thanks, Timothy. Thanks, Timothy. Okay, it looks like we have got Leslie Sexton. Leslie, you're muted?
Yeah, I am. I was, I'm on my iPhone and it was hard to scroll over to the speaking button. I, first of all, I'm opposed to reducing the size of any citizens advisory board. But I think it's clear from some of the comments that the inaction or failures of the current five members of the, the board should not be indicative of the whole community. And I think it's only fair that you give fair warning to those five members, since you did appoint them, that they have a certain timeframe in order to comply. Otherwise, since you appointed them, you have the power to unappoint them or, or rescind or cancel their, their appointment and put out bids to the community for applications. And I'm, I'm really heartened to hear that there are several people who are there present who are interested in stepping up in case the current five members of the board decide that they're not, they don't want to further fulfill their responsibilities. So thank you for this time.
And it looks like another one.
It's Gary. Good morning. Good morning. Gary Hansel, Stagecoach resident. As indicated in the new master plan, the 2020 master plan, Stagecoach is most certainly a distinct and separate area from any other part of Lyon County, the other, you know, Yarrington and Dayton and Fernley, et cetera. And as such, as a distinct community, we should and we must have our own representation rather than merging with the board or being dissolved. And I agree with previous speakers, rushing straight to dissolving a board seems very, very knee-jerk reaction. As, as anybody can attest to, if you've been involved in the meetings for, let's say, the last three years or more, we know for a fact that the Stagecoach residents care very deeply and will turn out for issues that concern them and will go to these advisory board meetings. You know, witness the Desert Wells, you know, proposal as that went through, you know, the, the process. We had standing room only crowds at Stagecoach Advisory Board. So people care and they care deeply about this community, and I do. With that said, it seems to me that this talk of dissolving or anything like that or merging is where the, the community is being penalized for the actions or inactions of several current board members. And frankly, you know, I'm guilty as charged. I don't even know who's on the board anymore. And I don't know who's not responding or who is responding on the Stagecoach Advisory Board. So that's on me. But nevertheless, the community is being punished because several people can't or don't or won't respond to a phone call or set up a meeting or whatever it takes them to do to, to move the board forward. So we've already had a number of people in this meeting indicate an interest in being on the board. As far as reducing the board to three versus five, I am for that if that's what it takes to keep the board going. Five is certainly better. But if we don't get five or can't get five, three, something is clearly way better than nothing. So again, rush to dissolve the board with motions and giving people 30 days, 60 days. Yeah, there, there, there has to be some time limit, time limit at some point. But frankly, unless my neighbor had not pointed this out to me less than a week ago, I didn't know this was on the agenda. I didn't know this was.
That's time.
Thanks, Ken.
No worries. Okay, any other further public comment? Any further board comment?
I have one. Thank you. I, I, I just wanted, you know, I don't normally address public comment, but I've heard several comments about we're jumping to dissolution. This has been an ongoing problem since I've been on this board for over a year of getting people trained. I know Aaron Lopez works really hard with the board members to get them trained. So we are not jumping to anything. This has been a long process and nothing that we've tried so far has to work. So apparently threatening dissolution got your attention. So, very good.
So we're down to threats as opposed to working to find.
Gary, please. Commissioner Jacobson.
I value, I thank you, Chairman Gray. I value advisory board's opinions. I value their input. They are communication piece for their community. And I am glad to see that I'm sure that in 90 days, this isn't even an issue. So I'm tickled pink. I think today was wonderful. Thank you.
Any other board comment? I do, I have a final comment. Not one person on this board has expressed interest in dissolving this board or any board or consolidating the board. So we, yeah, I did want to reiterate that. There has been issues. That's why I asked for more time also to find out what the issues were. Are they technical? Are they health? Exactly what I said before. And regardless of what anybody thinks, I know that every member on this board has been involved with every member of their respective community advisory boards and trying to help them recruit members, find members and participate. So, you know, we all value our, our boards and do want to thank them. I mean, you know, we've got members here, longstanding members. So if you are in any of the communities, I'll throw this out there again, any community and you're interested in, in serving on an advisory board, please step up, you know, and I know there's people in this room that have had, had strong opinion, shall we say, but I haven't seen an application from those people. So, you know, if you really want to help out, file an application, get on that board and serve in your community. So, so we have a motion, we have a second, a comment is done, our final comment's done. So at this point, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of Commissioner Jacobson's motion, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, guys. Thanks for the lengthy discussion and we are going to take a five minute break. Someone asks this guy when they come back, if they want to do, if they want to push on or.
Thank you.
Josh Foley, you are up, sir. Number sixteen A for possible action. Prove a reorganization of the Parks Department by adding one senior Parks Maintenance Worker position as well as purchases of equipment and supplies to be funded by decreasing contract work from a contingency budget transfer of $130 and $500.
Josh Foley, Lion County Controller for the record. Just to provide the board a little history on this, we used to have an additional person in the Parks Department a few years ago. When that person retired, we went ahead and decided to contract it out at the time instead of replacing some aging equipment that we had a few years back. At this point, Mr. Homestead, the facilities director, has come forward and asked to take over the Central Lion Parks corridor from the contract that we've been doing in the past. It would require approximately $130,000 in upfront costs to do it, but you should save that over time. And we think it may take more than one person over time, but we wanted to start it off with one and see what it looks like and then possibly expand that to the rest of the county. But currently, the proposal is just to take over the parks and buildings and grounds in the Central Lion corridor from Mount House, Silver City through Silver Springs.
And what is your recommendation?
My recommendation at this time is that we would move forward with this and approve it as presented. I believe that they'll be able to do a good job for us in that area, and it takes care of a few other issues for us in the facility side during the winter months. They have a number of other projects that Doug Homestead said that they could be working on during that time period.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Any questions from Mr. Foley and Ward?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Foley, I remember signing a contract for the Parks Maintenance somewhere around $160,000 last year. What impact does this extra person going to have on, say, reducing that Park Maintenance bill we get every year?
So, and I see Doug is there. It's going to reduce it by approximately 100,000, maybe more. That Parks Maintenance Bill that we signed last year was around March timeframe and it runs March through, it seems like October timeframe, and that covers taking care of all of the parks throughout the county during that time period. So, we're getting ready to go back out to bid, which is the reason why it's on your agenda at this time instead of coming through the regular budget process. And as part of that, we believe the prices will potentially go up for the entire contract. Plus, we have to add on to that original contract, the Silver Springs Ball Field that we did this last year. And so, this will help keep that cost down as well instead of increasing as much due to that ball field coming in. And Doug's there, I can see he has some comments.
And I think the Silver Springs Ball Field is going to be Doug Homestead, the Director of the facility Director. I think that fee for that field alone will be about 31,000, I'm guessing, just to do that field for nine months. I think, so you're actually looking at probably saving about 130,000.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm fully in support of this. And Mr. Foley and Doug, I'm glad that you mentioned that one person may not be enough, and we may want to look at it next year, expand this to the rest of the county. But to me, it makes more sense. I know it has some discussions and we're really happy with the performance of the contractor, and we definitely have more control than we have Lion County employees who work on Lion County Parks. So if you would accept it, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve a reorganization of the Parks Department by adding one senior Parks Maintenance Worker position as well as purchase of equipment and supplies to be funded by a contingency budget transfer of $130,500.
Second, we have motion and a second, any discussion. Yeah, I just, I just have one comment I'm concerned about. I mean, we had been right-sized for so long. Jeff Page's, you know, awesome ability, you know, once we had recession to right-size everything. I'm just concerned that we're getting back into the real comfortable phase and swelling things again, you know, whereas we could meet things with contracts. Yes, they're a little more upfront, but we don't have the backend costs of curves and things along those lines, or if we have to, you know, downsize again. So, I'm not against it, but I really want to be very cognizant moving forward, especially when you have the sheriff who's going to absolutely need folks again. I can see the DA's office needing people again, especially with our emphasis on code enforcement and the new bail, you know, new bail requirements, some of the things coming down the pike. So, I just would really caution us going forward about swelling the size of government. We've been so high-speed and low-drag for a while now. It's been, it's been nice. So, that's, that's my comment.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So, one of the concerns that I have with not doing this, we're currently paying approximately $130,000 for a contract for May to November. We're basically taking the same amount of money and having a year-round employee. Why that's important is, if you haven't noticed, specifically in the Dayton area, we have buildings that we have people in there 100 plus years old. Maintenance is getting more and more expensive, so we're having to contract with services instead of having staff do it, which is adding more to the cost because the contractor has to make the profits off. So, this is one of the situations that when we start looking at, I've maintained, with the exception of the Chief Development Director, any positions we bring back, the boots on the ground. And this is where we are, trying to get to the point where we can get ahead of the game on maintenance issues, reduce the impact to the taxpayer when it comes to the contractor. As an example, if I had my, if I could pull the building department back into the county and own it outright, I would do that. But I can't hire the people because they aren't there to exist. We were successful at that aspect because a bunch of retired building inspectors are now working for a private entity.
Who are doing work for us.
Right. So, for this particular issue, the staff and I, when we look at increasing staffing, we are very cognizant of the fact that we don't want to build a bigger system if we did it, it's not necessary. I have to look at what's along and what's most economical. It's better, from my perspective, to have control of the staff, deal with the facilities than is constantly having to contract somebody service it out.
I agree. And I'm just very worried because I think on the horizon, we may be due for another recession or worse with the economy.
I don't think, I know we're in for a recession.
I know. And I just, I hate telling people their job no longer exists. So, that being said, is there any public comment? Let's see, any, or Julia, that was your question. Okay. So, this, I'll take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, there we go. You're up again, Josh, with I have sixteen B for possible action discussion and direction staff and Board Commissioners for items. For items the board wishes to be considered in the upcoming budget process.
So, Josh Foley, Lion County Controller for the record. I had a commissioner talk to me and say, you know, by the time the budget process and the package gets to the board, it's already a balanced budget, and we haven't had any opportunity for the commissioners to provide input on items to be considered in the budget. So, that's the intent of this is just items that the board is interested in for the county manager and the comptroller as we're building the budget with the department heads to be aware of that the board is interested in. That's not saying that all of the items necessarily will be ones that the county manager recommends to be in the budget based on really the comments that you just made, Commissioner Gray. As far as where we're going to be this next, next few years, but it allows an opportunity for the board to give us items because we can't read your mind very well to, to consider as we're going through there and price out. So, if, if the board will give some input to us, we would really appreciate what your thoughts are.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Mr. Foley, I have some ideas for the ARPA funds, but really, when we're building the budget, what I, what I'm envisioning is, is you're building that budget around expenses, you know, expenses your staff has told you about. So, I guess from my standpoint, I've got to trust that you're going to do your job, bring those numbers to us, and then it's our job to look through that and then see where there's extra or possible savings, I guess. But to, I'm not going to get in your way and clutter your budget process as I can only imagine how stressful that is. I just want to thank you for your time on that, and it is always very detailed and concise. You must drive your wife nuts, so thank you.
Susan, you're laughing. Anyways, Mr. Foley, you and I have had discussions in the past, and you know, I think you're the most conservative person I know. Excuse me. So, I'm going to incline to agree with Commissioner Jacobson here. I don't think it's really for us to tell you how to do your job, but maybe have you make recommendations based on the department needs. And, you know, like we were hearing this morning, there's going to be some changes that are going to need to be made. And I know you'll provide something that is very comprehensive that we can understand and wrap our head around, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Foley. I appreciate this. And I think what I would really, I also agree with Commissioner Jacobson. You know, I have full confidence in you and the department heads and the county manager. But could you just possibly give us an oversight on kind of what you see coming down the road this budget cycle? Anything unusual or just your, I guess, just an overview of what you anticipate?
Sure. So, Josh Foley, Lion County Controller for the record, this budget cycle, I'm anticipating we're not going to see any budget reductions as far as revenues go. I anticipate the revenues are going to continue to grow for budget purposes. Now, that doesn't mean that the economy may not start to turn around over the next few months, but we're probably, I'm guessing, eight to 10 months out from seeing some significant changes in interest rates and so on and so forth. That's really going to impact the economy. So, we'll keep an eye on that. We may have to take a look at, at being careful spending what we have in the budget next year after it's been allocated and being conservative at that point due to the potential for recession in the future. As far as future expenditures over and above what our existing levels are, I know Facilities is going to be asking for another Parks position. As part of this discussion on the reorganization you just approved, part of it was they wanted two people. And I said, you know what? Exactly what Commissioner Gray, Chairman Gray said. We don't want to go overboard. We've been trimmed. We want to keep this so that we don't have to let people go in the future. If, if things are a little tighter, we should be able to afford the existing position out of, out of the contract savings. However, they're going to be looking for one there. We had the presentation on the, the bail hearings. That's going to be a significant expense. Hopefully, we'll be able to flesh that out a little more tomorrow with the department heads, but that's going to be a big dollar amount that we get hit with as we go forward. And I think across the board, we're going to see increases in services, supplies, fuel, as we know, is higher than it has been for many years. So, I'm hoping when we get all said and done, that the budget is probably going to be right-sized with just those items that we've discussed. Increase in revenues, increase in staffing for just the bail hearings, possibly maybe able to add another person or increase a position from a deputy to sergeant for the Sheriff's Department or two. And, and we'll see where that plays out, but it's still early in the process. I won't have revenue figures for another month or so before I, I have some information for you on that. But that's my, my overview. I think it's probably going to be fairly tight, just status quo plus those changes we discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. My comment's always been the same. You're a good comptroller because you always say no. And then you make us justify. So, I appreciate that. I know that's going to be the same thing as we move on to this next budget. So, keep it posted.
And I will have one specific request going through this Commissioner Gray. I'm sorry. I will have one specific request probably that I'll work through the Sheriff's Office. One thing we heard loud and clear is that, you know, we need to clean up our backyard in Lion County. And I don't mean figuratively, I mean literally. And I think one of the things we need to do, and we've been seeing it for years, and it's actually, I think, the problem's getting kind of out of hand again, but we really need to probably augment our tow budget and then have the sheriff come up with a program with the sheriff where he's got an overtime position to where they can go through the Central Lion corridor where the problem is the worst and tag cars that are on the public right-of-way that need to be, kind of right-of-way that need to be towed and gotten rid of. Because I just rode through Mount House again the other day and Dayton out behind Smiths, and it is absolutely horrible. And it's, it's more than just an eyesore. It's a public nuisance. It's a safety issue. And, you know, people shouldn't have to look at cars, you know, rotting in their, in their neighborhood. So, like I said, I am going to work with the sheriff on that, but I think we really need to at least take a one-year hard look at that and start cleaning up the streets.
Okay. Thank you. I've got that noted.
Thanks, Josh. Any further comments, questions?
Well, I was just in a comment when you said cleaning up our backyard, speaking for yourself.
Well, I meant like our public, the right-of-ways. You know, it's hard for us to do code enforcement on people when we're not taking care of the roads we're responsible, the areas we're responsible for. So, do we publish, do we have a motion on this one? I don't think it needs one. So, we'll close item sixteen B and move on to add your house. Yeah, we can take. It's appropriate. Sorry, there was no motion. So, kind of, I'm new at this.
You can only use that excuse for someone.
Wow, this is my first meeting. I'll have you know. No, well, she started the first, my first full meeting. All right, all right.
My name is Gina Lee, and I do have a request of something to be considered to be added to the budget. One of the problems that we do have in the neighborhoods in Dayton is the speed limits, not speed limits, the speed people drive around the neighborhoods. I live in the River Park area, and recently, we got one of the speed limit and display signs put there. It's, it's mobile, that you can move around. So, it has the speed limit, but the display's not working. So, it's not telling anyone how fast they're going. It's just telling you what the speed limit is. So, what I would like to request for the budget is to purchase more of those movable signs for speed, but actually have them working to put around Dayton to help with that, and especially with manpower being an issue for the Sheriff's Department, is that, that could help slow down law-abiding people that just aren't paying attention. So, I have that request to be on the input.
Mr. Jordan, make sure you sign in, please. Up there.
For the record, Eddie Norton. There is a comment for the controller. It may help him. I'm not sure during the downturn years back, I've been involved in three-year-old government, and they had a few things called forbearance agreements. I don't know if you have any. It's complicated. Finance, they did to put off old debt at a different interest rate and stuff like that. So, if you had any forbearance. So if you had any forbearance agreements out there, which smaller communities may not, but if any of those are coming up to where they're getting paid off, it might be a potential rainfall for you. So then I'm not sure if you have any forbearance agreements or not. Thank you.
Thank you, and just for the board's information, we have outside of the utilities fund, we have no debt for the county, so that's not. Not something we need to worry about at this point.
No offense, but we do things better than Reno.
That's why I was coming here.
Any further public comment? All right, now Andrew can come up, and we're going to go on to community developments and possible action for by direction. To the community development director, I'm ending the solid waste disposal franchise RFP to include the provision for waste disposal at future Lyon County landfill. And I might, the question last time was, is can the county acquire a contractor? To use a landfill that's not actually owned by the county, but is located in the county?
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. So we had some, we've been, Steve Ryan and I, District Attorney Steve Ryan and I, had some conversations about this. And we, Steve found some information that says that we can in fact acquire. The winner of the solid waste disposal RFP to dispose of that waste in a Lyon County landfill if there was one. So instead of, what I'm going to propose to the board is instead of going through the process of changing the RFP again. The contract that is in there is actually just a sample contract, and it's more or less what we intend to use, but we can change that up until the point that it decide. So my recommendation would be to add that language into the contract that actually gets used. That would require the franchisee to dispose of the waste in a Lyon County landfill. We will have to put some language in there that says that they have to renegotiate, that, that we'll have to renegotiate the prices in that contract. If we were to exercise that clause, just because there's, we don't have a landfill currently, there's no way for a proposer to reasonably set their prices based on. So that would be my recommendation is to, to move forward that way. We can certainly do it.
Steve Ride District Attorney, I think just to follow up on what Andrew said. The county's not really in a position to require that because we don't know what the landfill would look like, where we located, how it would operate. You also have the additional requirement that if the county did that, would you franchise the landfill, which you would have to go through that process too? So there are a number of steps, so it's, it's not possible to amend the RFP and say this is how it's going to work. Because honestly, that's not fair to the bidders, that's not fair to the, the citizens, because we just don't know what that looks like. So that's the reason that the recommendation from staff is not to.
But it would be totally legal and acceptable to put it in the contract that such type of land, that landfill was developed in Lyon County.
That is a possibility. That's not before the board today, the contract at the time. You review the proposals, staff will make a recommendation that will include the terms of that contract. But again, as Andrew pointed out, there's a lot of ifs in that kind of contract. Those things will be worked on, but that's not before the board today. Commissioner Jacobson.
Well, actually, Commissioner Keller, I have a personal.
We both kind of did, so go ahead.
Oh, whoever. Thank you, Chairman Gray, thank you. Vice Chair.
You're not used to that one, are you?
I, I knew I wasn't going to hear gentleman first, all right.
We works.
So a couple of things just to be clear, so this is basically a ten-year type contract, correct? Correct, okay. From what I know of a landfill, which is very little, but by the time we get. Which I want to be clear to everybody, I don't know of any land earmarked right now for a landfill, is there, Mr. Page?
Artificially, no, we're working on our landfill to include some, some properties to address that issue.
Yeah, so I don't know, so if it ends up in someone's backyard, I know nothing of it right now, but. But by the time we've got the land, I'm guessing there's some EPA C bids and so a ton of requirements. This is over ten years out.
It would be hard to, to make that statement for sure, but likely, yes.
But there's also, it also could be under ten years out though too, and that's why we wanted to write in there.
I'm just, just, I just want to throw that out there, I don't think that we have a landfill going in next year, everybody, so. I don't want to sound like that, but that sounds great. Thank you for your work on that.
My quick, well, kind of question. So by doing it this way, we pretty much were negotiating in the contract, so they've been put on notice at that point. That if a landfill does arise within their ten-year contract, because then we have a clause in there also to where they can extend the contract for five years, right?
Correct, but that at the five-year mark or the ten-year mark.
But the language would help them to realize that if the landfill does actually happen. Gets permitted to end up and all that stuff, whether that's five years, seven years, 10 years, whatever, it's there. So that kind of covers us on what we were trying to do without completely redoing the RFP. So we don't have to go back out.
Yeah, I think so, and then just so you're aware, at the ten-year mark as well, if that contract were to be renewed. If that contract does go back up for renegotiation too, so it's not like, it's not necessarily the same contract that would be approved for the five extension there.
Right, but by putting in this one, at least they're, they're aware of.
Yes, our intention.
Yeah, and that's what we were trying to do with that, we just say, let people know, hey, this could be something that arises down the road.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hockaday.
Thank you, Chair Gray. I would like to know where we sit when it comes to mandatory requirements in a contract. Whereas if you're saying that they have to use the landfill in Lyon County, since you happen to have one. Then normally run their business based on the bids that they get, and they're going to use the lowest bidder. In my experience, when you make something mandatory, that the price usually goes up. So how would we be able to handle that in contract, make sure that our contractor that does get, get the contract. Not going to sit there and say, well, you know, hey, we spend this much per ton, and now you're going to charge twice that amount because we have to use. How is that going to give them a safeguard that they're not going to be overcharged later downstream when they're looking for the lowest bidder for dumping?
So that's absolutely one of the challenges of including something like this before it's, before it's actually implemented. Because we don't have the price, as I said, now state law does allow for us to determine that it has to go to a landfill in Lyon County. So there's, it's specifically called out, and I think, I'm sorry, District Attorney Steve Wright, it sent me some information, I don't remember what the specific in R S has had appropriate. But the provisions there for allowing just that.
Exclusive use. Is there language in there to say that you've got to be reasonable, that exclusive use?
Steve Ride DA, Commissioner Hockaday, you know, the language does get tricky, and it would be a negotiation thing. It's not going to be, this is what it looks like, it's going to be basically an opener. If that event arises, whoever that bidder would be, that would be something that would be considered at that point.
And the thought process is, is there would be lower transportation costs, currently right now, they take everything to level log. So it should be, at worst, it should be a wash, but potentially it could be a savings for, you know, for the county. And I'm sorry, I know, Jeff, go ahead, I know you're going to correct it a little bit, but.
Lockwood?
Like I said, yeah, Lockwood. But would it really be a problem to take it there? Any further questions for the board, comments? Public comment? So I guess we don't need to act on this one either, that's the direction we're going to put in the contract.
Well, I think we still needed a motion.
Yeah, yeah, so if, if that's the direction that, that the board wants to go, then we just, the motion would be that there's no change to the RFP.
Well, and what I would just move that, that, yeah, direction to, for the contract as presented between you two. The language is needed. I don't want to try to reiterate all that, so as presented.
Can I ask a quick question? Well, that, uh, well, we, we'll get a chance to review the contract as well before it's signed, correct? So we can check the verbiage and make any comments?
Correct.
Correct, there's no, no approval of the contract date, just so everybody knows.
No, no.
Direction to staff to incorporate something to address that issue in the contract.
So we have a motion. Any comments? Can, can you restate the motion? I'm open to use.
Okay. Yeah, I, all I'm doing is making a motion to, because they're asking to provide direction to the community development director. To go ahead and put the language needed in the contract, not to change it. Well.
Yeah, the contract is not on the agenda today, so I mean, the. I think we have staff direction, if you want to include in the motion, direct staff.
But isn't the contract part of the RFP?
There's a draft contract part of the RFP. When the RFPs are evaluated, that'll be brought back to the board, at which time you would accept a proposal and award the contract. The contract will be approved.
Okay, so we, you don't want to change the language in the draft contract? My misunderstanding. So I thought that's what you were doing was.
Yeah, no, the, the agenda item today is for the RFP, and we will, because we don't want to make any changes at this point. Because then we'd have to reissue the RFP, so we'll just make sure that it gets done in the final contract, when it gets to that phase.
Okay, so on our next agenda, we should have had language on here directing staff to negotiate that in the contract. Rather than having us talk about the RFP that we don't want changed.
Yeah, that, this was requested by the commissioner, so yeah, I have, we can definitely put something on the next agenda.
Oh, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying we, we're addressing the wrong issue here, we need.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, so yeah, we can put it.
So my motion is to bring this back in two weeks and address the contract, not the RFP.
We had a motion on the table, so we need to present.
Well, yeah, I got to resend my, my previous motion, because.
Could the second have been rescinded?
Yeah.
So, yes, I would. You know, I'll just request it under future agenda items, we're good. I did resend.
Okay, it hurts.
I'm sorry, yeah, and he's.
Okay, so again, we don't really need a motion on this one, then.
I think we still have to have a motion.
If you want to move, just that there's no amendment to the RFP, that's only agenda item.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I moved that we provide directions to the community development director to not amend the solid waste disposal franchise RFP.
Second.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seventeen. For possible action, discuss and provide direction to county manager and community development director on the options allowed for development of. Tiny house regulations as required under SB 150 of the 2021 regular state legislative session.
Andrew Haskin, again for the record, I do have a quick PowerPoint presentation. No, I think it was in the folder. If, if you don't have it, it's okay, I'll just go.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
It's not, I've, I've got a copy of it here, so. I can just read. So today's discussion is about SB 150, which was the tiny home legislation that got passed in the last session. Which requires a local governing body to, within the states, cities and counties to include regulations to allow tiny houses. To be used as a single family dwelling units in specific instances. This is brought forth before the board at the last meeting, and there was some confusion when staff needed to do some additional research, so we're bringing it back today. So currently, this, this is kind of where the confusion was before. Currently, there are four types of tiny homes. There's stick-built construction, where the structure is constructed on site using standard residential construction methods on footings and foundations. There's more modular construction, where the structure is constructed offsite in sections in a factory and brought to the site to be assembled and placed on foundations. There's manufactured and made-to-order construction, so those are similar to manufactured homes, so they would be defined the same, they meet HUD standards. And they're delivered on wheels, so which can be removed and then the structure placed on footings and foundation. And then there's recreational park trailers, which are classified the same as RFPs. So that's where, that's where discussion kind of got off a little bit last time. So. Both stick-built and modular construction would be inspected as to compliance with the county's adopted building codes. Manufactured tiny homes would be inspected by the Lyon County Building Department. And the state of Nevada Department of Business and Industry, manufactured housing division to ensure that HUD certification has, has been met. That it's been placed safely, and then Nevada revised statutes, chapter 482 regulates motor vehicles and trailers. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of background there as to how that regulation works, so. So what Senate Bill 150 does is describe the definition of tiny house. So that adopted within the International Residential Code, the IRC. And so it, in there, it talked about appendix Q of the 2018 IRC. Under section AQ 102.1, generally defines tiny houses as follows. A dwelling that is 400 square feet or less in floor area excluding lots. The IRC includes within section R 202 definitions following. For a dwelling, any building that contains one or two dwelling units used, intended, or designed to be built, used, rented, leased. Let or hired out to be occupied or that are occupied for living purposes. And then dwelling unit, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. Permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, sanitation. Therefore, a tiny house per the 2018 IRC has to include the living area, kitchen and bathroom hall, which can be designed. And constructed to fit into a footprint of 400 square feet or less, so. So want to provide a little bit of clarification there, under this, the. RV type would not be included in that definition, because it doesn't meet the IRC standards, and it doesn't meet HUD standards. The manufactured home version of it technically would, but state law kind of contradicts itself there. Because they don't allow manufactured homes less than 1,200 square feet or consisting of less than two. Two sections, I think, so. Kind of effectively, it would be limited to the modular built and stick-built types unless state law changes. So. Lyon County as well as other local county governments provided testimony to the 2021 Senate Bill. Hearing regarding concerns about domestic water and sewage disposal impacts. The concerns voiced included the potential impact that tiny house developments would have in regard to being allowed in rural locations without available municipal water and sewer services. And then the focus of this concern was, was tiny houses requiring smaller than one acre minimum parcels. And the potential negative impacts to the underground water supply for rural communities in light of current state administrative code. Minimum lot size requirements for parcels using both what domestic well and system. So with that, that section one of the 2021 Senate Bill requires. That the governing bodies. That the governing bodies of a county whose population is under a hundred thousand to designate at least one. Zoning district in which a tiny house may be located and classified as an accessory dwelling unit. Or at least one zoning district in which a tiny house may be located and classified as a single-family residence. Or at least one zoning district in which a tiny house may be located in a tiny house park. This language gives those counties with a population of less than a hundred thousand the option to choose one of the three. And, again, I apologize that the, the presentation out there might be, I don't know, I, I like to read it in this, so, but it was, the information was provided in the staff report. So the accessory dwelling unit option, um, an accessory dwelling unit is permitted in agriculture, resource, residential, commercial, mixed use. And employment zoning districts, subject to compliance with development standards and approvals of an ADR application. So that, that's those zones where it currently be allowed, um. Excuse me, that, those are the. Zones where. A, an accessory dwelling unit would be currently allowed. We would have to go back and review as part of this ordinance, the current accessory dwelling unit development standards. Um, which includes maximum square footage, not to exceed fifty percent of the living area, primary residence or eleven hundred square feet. Gross floor area, um, there's a few other things must be cited, the rear must meet primary setback. Our primary structure building setbacks cannot exceed the height of the primary structure. We'd have to go back and kind of take a look at that and add some language, I think, if we were to go that route. But the zoning district option, um. And to allow a tiny house to be located and classified as a single-family residential dwelling unit in certain zoning districts, um, we did. Some, some things are considered rural residential versus suburban residential, um. SR and in our zoning districts, exclude one from the other, or allow both in the bill. Suburban services versus rural services, so municipal water and sewer service versus domestic well and septic. And, um, would. They'd be allowed to stand as, um, they would be allowed as a standalone detached, single-family residential dwelling unit. Um, would they be required to comply with the development standards, maximum building height? Minimum building setbacks, minimum lot frontage, so. And finally, the tiny house park option. Um, dra- draft reg- regulations for tiny house parks. And designated at least one zoning district that allows tiny house parks, if this option was chosen. Uh, then staff would bring forward regulations that reflect development standards listed in fifteen point three five two point oh three and title fifteen. That is the section of title fifteen that regulates manufactured homes, uh, manufactured home parks current. So we would take a look at maybe adopting standards similar to current manufactured home parks. Which requires minimum space requirements for each tiny house unit, requires building setbacks, structural separation requirements. Requires connection to municipal water and sewer service, requires common open space and recreational amenities, and requires exterior perimeter wall with landscape area. And so that'll open it up to any questions, and, um.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, just one question. Current, uh, under our current regulations in zoning, if. I wanted to build a four, four hundred square foot such restructure in my backyard, accessory housing, structure in my backyard, could I do that? Under the current zoning?
So, um. It's, it's a little bit, that's kind of a complicated question, because of certain size requirements that are listed in IRC or.
Okay, right, right now, they're what, uh, twelve hundred square feet or half, half the size of the primary building?
So that's the maximum, that's eleven hundred square feet or half the size of the primary.
Four hundred square feet is more than that.
Hmm, yeah, no, so, wow, I'm talking about the minimum size, so we don't currently have a minimum size in code. However, or in title fifteen, I should say, but in IRC, they have a certain number of. Like for a kitchen and for a bathroom, they have certain square footage requirements that you have to meet. Um, that are separate from the tiny house requirements in the IRC. And so currently, I think that minimum, if you add it all up, it's right around six hundred square feet, it's a little less than six hundred square feet. So to answer your question, because we don't currently allow tiny homes in Lyon County, um, that wouldn't be. You, you cannot currently build it four hundred square foot.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chairman, just one, um. What? Have, we really even heard a recommendation? Our director.
So there, yeah, there was.
So, I, what I was envisioning though is we're gonna need city water and city sewer for this to even be pulled off.
Well, well, that's, that's kind of what we're asking, is for a little bit of direction there, so how the board wants to, to see that work. And I think that that's certainly a concern. I think the recommendation in the staff report was to go with the tiny house park option, similar to manufactured homes. Um, manufactured home park, that was the, the recommendation, um. I could also see the, uh. See going for allowing it as an accessory dwelling unit, but we will have to take a look at that. And make some changes to that as well. And both of those options are, are good, but you, again, that's certainly something that, that needs to be considered, and that's. The purpose of the different character districts, right?
So allowing them as an accessory unit would not negate something larger, would it?
No, so how an accessory unit works is they have to build a primary residence first, you cannot, uh, just go ahead and.
Great. But what I'm saying though is if, uh, if somebody wanted to build an in-law quarter in the back of their house. And it was seven hundred square feet, you know, meaning all the other standards, you're gonna, we're not gonna say, no, it has to be four hundred square feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
I did try and make sure.
Yeah.
Unintended consequences.
Yeah, really, and the only difference in, in that, that regard is just the, the difference in the minimum square footage, we're only talking about two hundred square feet.
Which is fifty percent of a tiny house.
Fifty percent of a tiny house, but.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, no, I, I mean, as everybody heard at the last meeting, I, I'm all for the accessory use, that's what we fought for in legislature. Um, so that we have that ability. Um, I'm absolutely, at this point in time, not that things won't change in the future, uh, against tiny home parks in Lyon County. Um, most of Lyon County is still rural, and. We do have water and sewer issues and stuff like that, so. I'm fully leaning towards the accessory use at this point in time.
And I, I think that's a good option as well.
So I, I like that too, Commissioner Keller, sorry, Chairman Gray, thank you, um, but. That's limiting it to one, right? We're not creating compounds.
Correct, yeah, you would only be allowed one accessory dwelling unit, that's already. Alright.
Just, just one, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree, I'm kind of leaning towards the accessory housing unit as well. Um, I don't wanna totally rule out the tiny house park, because I think maybe in the future. There could be a use for that, especially if we have a big. Employer come in, in an area where there's no housing. You know, but that can be added back, or that could be added in the title fifteen in a, in a later date if we don't do that now, so. Yeah, but as, as the three, the accessory makes the most sense to start with.
I do see Mr. Pizel has his hand up.
Mr. Pizel? Yeah, sorry, I was just, uh, for the record, Rob Pizel, senior planner, I was just waiting for the chair to recognize me. The, um, the staff report, while it does point towards, um. The, the manufact- or the, the tiny home park. Um, honestly, any of the three options could be done if you were going to look at allowing them as standalone, single-family residential dwelling units. Then we would ask, um, you know, we, we pose some additional questions, you know, are you. Looking to allow them in the rural residential zoning districts where the minimum lot size ranges from twenty acres down to, down to two acres? Um, or just the suburban residential zoning districts where the lot sizes range from. Um, forty-five hundred square feet all the way up to two acres. Uh, just some of the considerations we asked for, and the reason again, we ask for direction is because. Uh, actually, we have received questions about utilizing these on, um, some of the larger lot sizes and not just, uh, manufactured home parks. Um, in consideration with regard to as an accessory dwelling unit option. Um, do you want to look at revising the current standards that require a. Accessory dwelling unit to reflect the same building materials, colors, roof pitch, roofing materials. As the primary residence, those are kind of the, it, it, you know, those are the kind of discussions that would, uh, help staff in, in developing. Um, an ordinance that, that either allows for all three options or concentrates on two. As I heard Commissioner Henderson, um, um. Is in favor of looking at the tiny house park option as well, or just the accessory dwelling unit option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pizel. Any further comments? Okay, at this time, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I was just reading the agenda item again real quick.
Reserve the time for your, your motion. Can somebody play the Jeopardy song?
No. Don't do that. So I would like. To make a motion that we provide, we're providing direction to the county manager, but the community development director over there. Um, on the tiny house regulations required under Senate Bill one fifty of the twenty twenty-one regular state. Legislative session, that we go with the, eh. Yeah, accessory dwell, I was thinking of another word to put in front of that, but anyways, accessory dwelling, um, use. With that. The question came up about like type and everything, if somebody puts in, um, a six hundred square foot accessory use right now. Those guidelines are already there, I think we should stick with those same guidelines. Uh, if they're gonna put it, you know, it's just allowing them to go down to the four hundred square foot, so I think the rest of guidelines. Should reflect the same as a normal accessory use.
I'll second that.
And, uh. And as far as, uh, you needed zoning districts in that motion as well, right? Or do we, or can we just go with the current ones now, because we could always add two?
So, yeah, you can go to the current ones, um, and.
And can you read those off real quickly for me again? And that was part of the motion, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's.
I just don't wanna leave anything out.
Agricultural, resource, residential, commercial, mixed use, and employment.
Okay, thank you, and I would like to incorporate those as well.
I was, you wanna incorporate a commercial? That would be, I'm not, I'm okay with the other ones, but I.
Well, we do have accessory uses to commercial, like, um.
Watching quarters.
Watching quarters and stuff like that.
Sick built homes.
Is there a second in the motion?
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, I'll say it.
And, and if I may, uh, again, for the record, Rob Pizel, senior planner. In the commercial, commercial mixed-use zoning districts, um, they would only be allowed in the, um, the mixed-use zoning districts. And it would have to be accessory to the residential use, you can't have a commercial use that has an accessory dwelling unit as part of that commercial use. Thank you.
Thanks for clearing that up. So we have a motion and a second, any board discussion? Any public comment?
I have a question.
It's, it's public comments, I don't expect an answer.
Gina Lee, I'm just, um, I was just wondering about the, um, the. The addition, the accessory building, having to have the same type, does that mean if my. Uh, primary home is stucco, that if I put an accessory unit in my backyard, it would have to be stucco, but it couldn't be. You know, that kind of wood paneling stuff that they, that's my question.
I can provide an answer real quick. Go for it, yeah, that, that's right, it would have to be the same as the, the main house.
And that's correct. Alrighty, uh, any more public comment?
Well, just, can I add this real quickly for clarification, because we are talking in accessory use, which is a dwelling. People live in it, so it's not the same as if somebody put a shed or something in the backyard and it was different from their house. This would only be, really, you're adding on to your. Your property by adding another dwelling unit, even though it's only four hundred square foot, so.
Mr. Chair, I believe they have to have the three things in there. Cooking, sleeping, but.
Yeah, tiny house, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another.
There was a, there was a few things in there, actually, um.
I think what Commissioner Keller was gonna add is that it's a, it's a living quarters, that's in addition to your house, it's not a shed that you're gonna be storing stuff in. Accessory use is kind of a misnomer.
Yeah, yeah, there's a separate category for accessories, structures.
Well, we kind of addressed the public comment, and so I kind of wanted to clarify it, so people don't come back later thinking their sheds and everything has to match the house, it's just.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh. Any further discussion? Okay, singing for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes by you. Next up, item eighteen A, utilities, possible action to approve a no-cost change order with. Resource Development Company for the Upper Dayton Tank Rehabilitation Project, which extends the contract time to completion until May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. So that the exterior paint coating will be applied during the weather conditions that are in accordance with the paint manufacturer's recommendation, request by David Riketta.
Chairman, great question, David, to get it for the record, so, um, this is, I just wanna emphasize this is a no con- no cost, uh, change order. No cost change order to the county, just simply an extension of time. When we, excuse me, when we started this project, we started it in the fall because it's restrictions. With the ability for Carson City to deliver us water during peak demands, so we're required to, you know, meet those demands. So we started this in the fall, we knew this was a potential risk. Um, and then obviously, in December, we had quite a bit of we- weather that prevented the manufacturer from applying it. Contractor's been very good to work with on this, um, they did try to apply it, you know, prior to the contract deadline, but because of weather conditions, they actually now have to go back and. Uh, do some repair work associated with it. Um, but with this, we'll give them the extension of time, there'll be no additional cost to us. You'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Riketta, just one comment, I like the words, no cost. We, we had change orders, good days, no costs, those are the best ones.
No, no, best words are refund or rebate.
Last year.
Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve eighteen A as presented.
Second. Discussion, any public comments? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen B, presentation only, utilities department projects, that is update from the utilities engineer, Kishore Akanda.
Oh, good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, uh, good to see you in person.
Yeah.
This was almost one and a half years I was presenting online, just. Okay, uh, here we go. Um, the HRTS project, uh, progress report for the last quarter. Uh, here is a summary, uh, as you can see, there are. Seven projects at different stages of implementation, uh, two of them are in design phase, which is. Um, rolling a plant expansion phase for project. Uh, asking to traffic infiltration this project, so these two projects are in design phase right now. There are four projects in construction, um, sewer replacement, number two replacement project. I have fifty water line, there's one a project. Opera and load data tank, rehab project. Other row pressure reducing valve replacement projects. So these four projects are in different stages of construction. Uh, in the last quarter, we completed one project, which is, uh, we know create legislation liner replacement. That was completed as per the contract, uh, in December. So next few slides, uh, each slide, I basically present some of the details for each project. Uh, but I basically go for the high-level summary of the projects, if you have any specific questions, I can. So the first project is, uh, rolling a plant expansion. This project has been designed, I mean, designed, it's completed in July of twenty-one. End of, we sell this project, uh, until we finish the rapid infiltration basin project commissioning. Because, uh, that project basically needs the space for effluent disposal. Until unless we complete the red project, we cannot start the construction for this project. So with hundred percent design being completed, this is basically waiting until we commission the, uh, the red project. Sometimes in twenty twenty-two. The next project is the one we're talking Aspen Peak Rapid Infiltration Basin. Basically, this is a new facility that is going to provide hundred percent capacity for it when we start, uh, from the day to utility service area. We advertised the bid back in September last year. Unfortunately, due to some permitting issues, we had to pull the bid, uh, from the advertisement. Uh, our engineer basically modified the design, submitted the redesign to the Department of Water Resources for dam permit safety, dam safety department for a permit back, uh, last month. Um, bidding was scheduled to start this month, but as of this week, uh, we are still waiting for a permit from this department. So we are diligently working with both engineers and the department, so that within a week's time, hopefully, we'll get the permit, we'll start bidding of, in mid-February. Um, one thing to note here, the redesign basically increased the cost of the projects. At this point, we don't have the exact number, but what we can estimate probably the cost will go up by at least half a million dollar. Um, sewer litigation number two replacement project. Um, this project's bid was open in September. Construction contract board approved in November. As for the plan, construction to begin this month. But the current market scenario for the material, uh, delay in procurement, basically. Delaying this project as of date, contractor even doesn't have a solid schedule for this project to be in the construction. Um, we have been now working with both with engineers and the contractor, but the lead time for most of the materials and the cumin has been getting pushed and pushed. Some of the, for example, uh, some of the cumin, they're being pushed for at least eight to nine months. Um, so looking at all these boundary conditions, we are planning to see how we can start the construction and finish this project in the time we have. Um, just to remind you that these previous three projects I just covered, they're part of the SRF loan projects, and they are so significantly expensive and, uh, current market scenario basically is going to impact these projects in the future. Uh, next project is Highway fifty waterline replacement project. Uh, this, this project has been completed as per the contract. Uh, but unfortunately, again, due to the incremental weather, uh, one part of the project, uh, which was, uh, payment work on Highway fifty uh, could be completed until we have the right temperature to do the payment work. Board approved, uh, again, no cost contract time extension until June. And as soon as the weather gets good, basically contractor is going to finish the last part of the project. Uh, but as you know, the road is open and, uh, it is substantially completed as of. Next project is, uh, upper lower, day on tank rehab project. Um, the construction is substantially completed as of thirteenth of December, as per the contract timeline. But again, due to the weather issue, we couldn't, um, finish the last part of the putting some repair and repair work. Um, as, uh, Director presented that, uh, and board approved the time extension, but the good news is last week, uh, contractor was able to basically finish the work. So we are just waiting for the final inspection by the coating inspector. If it is clear, hopefully, the project will be closed by next, uh, video of February. Uh, next project, which is, uh, under construction also. Eldero pressure reducing valve relocation project. Again, uh, this project is complete, um, but the time to bring the system into service, we are waiting for this offer date and time to be online, because that's uncontiguous upon completion of that project. Unless the tank is online, we cannot bring this online, so construction was done by staff. Um, so basically, we're waiting for the offer date, offer date and time to be online. Uh, one project that we completed last quarter, um, is, uh, we located Litigation Liner Rehab Data, Rehab Rehab Project. Um, the construction was completed in November as per the contract timeline. And, uh, while the change order board approved for someone known uh, work in that project, uh, um, which basically increased the cost of the project. The initial budget was sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars, the actual expenditure was seventy-two thousand dollars. So that's all I have, a highlight of the projects, I'll be happy to answer if you have any questions on the projects.
Yeah, I got a question, I'll back the first one, uh, five hundred thousand dollar change order or design? Can you, maybe I missed it, can you give a little more, give us a little more information on that, that's, uh, that's huge.
Yes.
And where is that money coming from?
Yeah, that is for the rapid infiltration mission, so what happened, basically, the design of the dam is different from the way the engineer designed the, the embankment for the red facility. So due to the liquefaction calculation that the Department of Water Resources, so right now, we have to dig more, right, at this point, for a three to four bit below and, and fill it with a, with a greater material that can support the liquefaction correction. So that additional digging, plus there is another comment that was significantly expensive for us to deposit. It was the stormwater design, initially asked for the county board, engineer designed for a twenty-five-year storm period. So the Department of Dam Safety, they came up with a hundred-year segment, naturally, the channel is now big. And we need to put the, uh, the, the basically the, the embankment protection for the entire stretch of the channel around the structure, so those two elements probably, uh, we have not finalized the design yet, because still we are working with the dam city. Um, but I'd say probably at least half a million to one million, I would say. And budget-wise, again, these three projects back in twenty-twenty, and of course, I started, um, these three projects are budgeted around twenty to twenty-five million dollar in that range. As you estimate the budget preparing for the next financial year, it's going to be more than thirty million dollar due to the impact of the current market condition. And this project, again, this is, uh, to respond to the dam safety comments. It's a slight design change, but again, the cost is about close to a million dollar, I would say.
Okay. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, if I, if I remember correctly, you weren't considering this a dam when we started. Right, but then we were told that because it holds, could potentially hold so much water, it has to be considered a dam, so therefore, the requirements are more stringent?
Well, our engineer when initially discussed with this department, maybe a year or more ago, I, we didn't find any communication, bit of communication, but the initial understanding of our engineer was, this is a low-risk, low-rise dam, basically, will get a permit without such, uh, uh, extensive review by the department. Maybe some staff got changed during the course of the time, when we submitted the hundred percent design, they came up with at least two to three pieces of comments. And, um, that took us some time to, and also the funny, to redesign the entire thing. Uh, of course, the civil part only, not the electrical or the instrument side. So, within a very tight, uh, within a three to four weeks, engineers did a good job, they submitted the project. Because once we miss the construction period for this project, we're going to post the rolling of that expansion by at least six months, so we don't have time to do that. So, we, we tried to finish the project redesign within a month, we submitted, I think, mid of December. Until now, we had a meeting last, uh, I think two days back, still there are some, some comments that they are not, uh, not approved. So hopefully, by weeks, weeks of time, we'll be able to wrap it up. And, uh, again, that's a permitting authority, so we have, you don't have any control of that.
Any other work comments? Thank you, Mr. Ranger. Okay, moving on to nineteen, agenda requests.
Um, I had written down as well for, um, getting the, putting the firm canal on the agenda as far as maybe getting a city rep or presentation on what has happened with litigation and possibly what effects that may have for Burnley. Thanks, and then I had one last, but you got that one. Thank you.
That was the discussion on, uh, naming buildings.
Um, yeah, so, you know, we had a couple that were the same here, uh, addressing, yeah, the canal and, uh, where we can go with that, um, as far as, you know, where they're at with the lawsuit, I mean, we know what the determination was, but, you know, what's the next steps? Type thing, what, what can we do, um, working with? So that's some language we might have to come up with, you know, and next agenda, how, how that would work, if we reach out firmly. So we'll test it and advise it for discussion. Then, uh, obviously, on the RFP with the contract language, I would like to address um, on the next agenda, uh, the, the contract language to be negotiated. Through the RFP. It's not changing the RFP, but the contract language. And then, uh, the number one I had, um, besides Burnley from this morning, uh, is, I would like to have a discre- discussion, because I was also looking at the dues, don'ts, possibilities of the infrastructure bills in regards to roads, dams, you name it, um, across lying county. If we could have that on the next agenda, um, giving somebody an opportunity to kind of look through. So what, like Jeff said, we, excuse me.
Switch to my class.
Or sneeze, um. Some things were, you know, hodgepodge, quickly put together, um, pulled some information from NDOT on, you know, like Ramsey Hopeful and stuff, when we were trying to get a, a grant that we didn't get. So maybe we can, uh, pull that back up, and Jeff already kind of already hit on it. Sorry, I gotta take over my, I can't get rid, you guys.
I've got a, I've got a few also, uh, for discussion only, or just update from staff. An update on the Mount House Community Center, uh, properties, we were looking to see, you know, if there were properties that were owned by line counter, or already been donated. And then a land bill update, if you guys are ready to at least provide some information as to what you're looking at. And, uh, if not, what's going on, but I'd like to see kind of at this point where you guys stand. This will be for possible action. Uh, would like to, uh, get on there, the, the Dayton Second Bridge, uh, formally designate a location as much as possible. Um, I know you guys are recommending James or Chabs or Chavez or whatever we say this week. Um, but, yeah, it'd be nice if we formally designated that, so that Henry would know where, if we do go forward, that's, that's where it's gonna be. And then also maybe an update on the engineering, and if we need to provide you guys any direction to begin, uh, looking at engineering as, as well as any other things, uh, right away, things that may, you may need to start working on now. So provided any money does come rolling down the pipe, we can be, you know, eighty percent ready to go. And. So, and then maybe, uh, begin to, begin to discuss our, our requests, you know, start taking, taking them now, and maybe we can, uh, work through that, start ranking, work, working on going forward. That's all I got. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to tag team with Commissioner Gray on the Dayton Bridge issue. Uh, it might be helpful, uh, kind of what's been done in the past, where, where we're at, the whole Dayton Bridge, and, and the bridge alone is, is, you know, just a bridge, but connecting road network and possible funding sources, including a correctional, uh, earmark, since those are back. Might as well see if we can get some money out of that. And also, I'd like to have an agenda item for us to start discussions on possibly using the Lion County BDR for the twenty twenty-three legislative session.
We're gonna have a full agenda. Cause we're, we're struggling.
Yes, I'm gonna just kind of piggyback on what I'd asked for. During the last year, there was a slide presented about our roads, amount of money predicted, can we fix the roads? I think Smith Dally was at the top of the list, and I'm sitting here going, what roads are so bad that it was gonna cost like eleven million dollars? Fix all the roads in Smith Dally. Know that was brought up, just to see, can we get some specifics on what we're talking about for that type of money? Of course, it went down through the Dayton and Silver Springs, and everybody had their money amounts. I just, I'm seeing what our priorities are.
And why they are.
I have another request. I'm listening to all these requests, I'm, I'm, I'm tallying up of my hair, so are we gonna have lunch served that day?
I'm okay with that.
I'm not worried about lunch, you suffer every day.
We had nineteen items today. And it's two o'clock.
And we didn't do lunch, right?
Yeah, but you get supper. That was so funny.
We also had a couple carryover items. Okay, uh, do we have a, uh, do we have a closed session there?
No.
Thank God, no.
You changed your mind.
Uh, with that being said, uh, we'll go our final public information.
I saw you pick up that gavel, like, what you doing?
Okay, all right, you guys made comments, all right, any commissioner comments, I'm just gonna throw it out there.
I was gonna say a half million dollars for damn safety.
Damn.
I, I do have, I do have one comment I, I wanna make, and it's just kind of an information thing, as, oh, you know, there's been a couple of our meetings there. My sister gave the indication for it, just wanted to report that she has been in the hospital recently, but she is out and back home, so life is good.
Okay. Hey, uh, public comment? For anything that wasn't covered on the agenda? Do you have? Adjourned.